We're live, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Good evening, community, council members and staff, and welcome to an online special closed session meeting of the Burbank City Council on Friday, April the 9th, 2021. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting in lieu of in-person attendance. Our phone lines are open for the public on the closed session items only. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes and may participate by calling in right now at 818-238-3335. Again, the phone number is 818-238-3335. Madam City Attorney, will you please state the closed session items for this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the public and members of the council. Council will be in closed session on one existing litigation case pursuant to Government Code Section 954, I'm sorry, 54956.9 subsection D1, City of Burbank Atoll versus Barfly Inc., also known as Tin Horn Flats Atoll, and it's concerning violation of Burbank Municipal Codes and abatement of nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Good evening, Ms. Jimenez. Do we have any callers on the line for public comment on the closed session items only?
Good evening, Mayor. We currently have 20 calls in the queue.
Okay, please beam them down.
Already connecting shortly.
Our first caller is Cindy Zerkel. Cindy, you're live with council.
Can you give me one second, Christine? Sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you want to leave the time at three minutes? Or do you want to shorten it?
Yeah, because there's 20 callers, and I know people have contacted me to get frustrated, waiting for hours to finally get their three minutes. For the good of the order, so more people can participate and not get discouraged for the long wait, I will change it to two minutes this evening. So, Ms. Jimenez, if whoever's picking up the phone can please let them know that we're at two minutes due to the large volume of callers calling in.
Thank you, and will do, Mayor. We now have 25 callers on the line.
Okay, please let them know it's two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney and Ms. Jimenez.
Our first caller is Cindy Zerkel. Cindy, you're live with council.
Evening, welcome.
Thank you so much. I just want to say I support the opening of Tin Horn Flats. And if there are currently any lawsuits against Tin Horn Flats, I ask that you would drop them. That, sorry about that. Somebody rang the doorbell. I wish that the Burbank Council would drop any and all lawsuits against Tin Horn Flats. Businesses been through a lot this past year, and it's time to support them and all come together now. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Coming through in a moment.
Our next caller is Christian Alvarez. Christian, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, nice to meet you guys or talk to you over the phone. I just wanted to call in regards to the Tin Horn Flats court ruling. And I just have a few problems as a citizen of Burbank. I have eaten at this restaurant before. I had a great time there, but just the way that they've been acting in the last few months during this pandemic, it's shown me that there's a blatant disregard for public health. And it has me worried that if I ever go back to this restaurant again, it's not just about, you know, COVID, even if everybody got vaccinated. I'm worried that they're not taking those laws seriously. So there could be poisoning for the food. Who knows, honestly? I think this may be a bigger issue than they're making it. And it seems like they really do not care. They're breaking down the chain that the city's putting up. They don't, it seems like they really don't care. And I don't think that's fair to the other restaurants that did, you know, weighed out the COVID thing. They listened to the rules. They went through all the standards and practices. And I don't think it's fair that these guys just get to get off with a slap on the wrist. Yeah, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Ryan Compton. Ryan, you're live with council.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good evening. Good, sir.
Cool, I'll make it quick. I know you guys are busy. I just want to say like, thank you so much for taking my call. I've been living and working in the Burbank area since about 2004. About three years ago, my wife and I were ready to start a family and buy a home. And we purchased in Burbank just because it's, I love it here. It's schools, it's, you know, safety, the parks and services, et cetera. You know, I shop local here at stores like House of Secrets, Handy Market, Dad's Donuts, all that. I swim for the local swim team at the Vertigo Pool. So I really just want to express how much I love this town. So when I say this, the situation at Tin Horn Flats to me has just become very unacceptable. You know, this sort of flagrant disregard for the law as well as the safety of the citizens of the city is just kind of appalling. It's become a hazard. One of my former producers, his spouse is one of the health inspectors. They got harassed, called names, and was supposedly followed home to be intimidated by some of these patrons of the establishment. And that's just not what we want as citizens of the city. Or at least, I don't like not to see as a citizen of the city. You know, I will admit, I am on the left side of the political spectrum, but I wouldn't tolerate this sort of attitude, behavior on anyone on my side of the aisle as well. It's just unacceptable. I do get that COVID has been devastating to many companies and businesses. I actually lost my job last year as a producer with one of the studios. But I don't think that gives any person or corporation the right to endanger others as well as just, you know, the locals. It's just, it's not, not good. I know there's a lot of red tape that you guys are all doing, and you're doing everything you can. But it does appear to a lot of people, like I do troll through like the Reddit subreddit for Burbank, and, you know, a lot of people are just talking real like, oh, they're going to fly right on through this. They're going to get away with it because the city is too chicken to do anything about it. You know, and it's scary because, and I'll make this real quick. You know, it's like, I'm scared because like, you know, I drive around with my tag expired on my car and get pulled over by the police. But then these guys essentially just get slapped on the wrist for, you know, breaking into their own building and cutting off locks and all of that. I'll, at the end of the day, I know, you know, everyone's in the same boat.
Sir, your two minutes, sir, your two minutes are over. Sorry, thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Mayor, while we're waiting for the next caller, can you repeat the phone number to call in? I have people that are calling in on the Zoom, and I just want to make sure that they're calling in on the correct phone number.
Sure, the number I have is area code 818-238-3335. Again, that phone number is 818-238-3335.
Our next caller is Steve. Steve, you're live with council.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I really appreciate your kind attention. I'm a citizen of Burbank since 1995. I've lived here for 17 years. Today, I'm formally asking the City of Burbank end its battle against the single owner business, Tin Horn Flats, which has been in business in Burbank since the night before I arrived here. What Tin Horn Flats has done by staying open was to ensure they would not have to close their doors permanently due to forced closures during the pandemic. It is true, they defied government orders, but there's no evidence that anyone, neither the employees nor customers were infected with COVID there. If the City of Burbank was so concerned with the COVID infection, why were Walmarts, Target, Lowe's, Costco, and other large corporations allowed to stay open? Are you going to tell me there was no concern that these businesses, who literally see thousands of customers a day, were less of a threat than this one tiny restaurant? If you were truly concerned with the health and safety of the citizens, you would have shut them down or limited their capacity immediately. And they would have stayed closed until the pandemic subsided. During the course of the pandemic in 2020, Councilman Anthony promoted numerous protests and gatherings without permits from the city during the pandemic in the name of free speech. These illegal gatherings truly put citizens at risk of infection as well as drew citizens of Burbank into controversy and could have resulted in violence and property damage. However, to date, I'm not aware of any legal action against Councilman Anthony or his fellow organizers. Even though these events were an extra strain on the Burbank Police Department during a time when they were already under duress because of the pandemic, all the City of Burbank is doing is fortifying the notions that California and Burbank specifically are hostile to small businesses.
Sir, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your call, sir. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tina Martinez. Tina, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to voice my opinion, what I think is going on with Tin Horn Flats. I just don't agree with what's going on. I think the City of Burbank is being very unfair. And I just don't see how you guys can shut someone's business down like that and throw them in jail when every other city in California is open. It's just ridiculous. I mean, are you guys taking, you're going to take our livelihoods, our businesses? It's just, you know, it's going overboard and the amount of control and it's just tyrannical. I mean, I, you know, I don't, I disagree with that. I don't want to, I don't want to have to live in this city. It's just ridiculous. This city is worse than almost every city in California. I haven't been to a city yet that's worse than Burbank. I mean, come on. What's going on with you guys? Who's running this city? Why are you guys trying to take our livelihoods? I mean, I don't get it. So yeah, I just want to let you guys know that what you're doing is totally unfair. And I just totally disagree with it. Thanks.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next speaker is Nat Inasif. Nat, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing me on. So I'm going to mute something. So anyway, I want to be clear that I'm not a current or former member of Tin Horn Flats, excuse me, employee. Do not claim to represent them in any way. I want to thank the council members for their work in uniting people across Burbank and Los Angeles County. Specifically, just a moment. Specifically, you have so dramatically crossed the line and failed in your duties to constituents that more people than ever are recognizing you for the snakes that you are. So those of you voting to shut down Tin Horn Flats or any other restaurant have no sense of what's actually written wrong. You just blindly follow the law and the made up laws, even if they're unjust, and you ruthlessly pursue power. You keep changing the rules and blaming the owners, the county board of supervisors, the Health Department, the governor, for your decision to shut down a family owned restaurant, your decision, so stop blaming other people. And despite your constituents petitioning you for redress of grievances, which is our right, you double down on your ideological witch hunt against anyone who doesn't blindly follow you. So you make my skin crawl. You're disgusting. Now, there are three things you can do. One is to stand down, meaning give up on scapegoating a family of first generation Armenians who came here to pursue opportunity only to face more oppression from you. Number two would be to step down, meaning resign. Because if you don't do so willingly, you're going to get thousands of calls, emails, and tweets until you do. And number three would be, just keep doing what you're doing. Just keep getting high on your power, in which case the response will be the same. But just to be fair, just to be clear, you're elected officials. You do a lot of work. This is not about revenge, but it is about your political careers will suffer if you don't do the right thing. That's just how it works. So please try to do the right thing. Please reach into your sense of humanity and reopen this restaurant and let us go back to our normal lives. And just keep in mind, we have your contact information. We have lists of Burbank voters and businesses. We've raised a lot of money. We've organized protests. We've held your council members accountable. So there's no reason we can't dethrone you as well. And again, this is not about revenge. This is about holding you accountable. No one wishes any of you ill will. We just want you to be accountable. But you wish us ill will when you send riot police to shut down peaceful protesters and to keep a restaurant closed. So please keep that in mind. Please do the right thing. Stand down, reopen Tin Horn Flats, or face the political consequences.
Mayor, we have exceeded the two-minute time limit.
Sir, thank you for your call. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Kate Tucischer. Kate, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I have either lived, gone to school in, or worked in Burbank for the majority of my life. I would like to, I currently live in Magnolia Park. And I would like to remind the City Council that this extended conflict is setting a precedent for future businesses who consider opening in Burbank. The current message seems to be that a restaurant can operate without a health permit or a valid conditional use permit with minimal, if any, consequences. I understand wanting to cooperate to promote a healthy local economy for small businesses, but that should not be at the expense of the safety, health, and general well-being of the people who live in Burbank. I am sure I'm not alone in saying that I have been plagued with anxiety over this conflict. As every time I hear a siren on Magnolia, I worry that either there's been another violent confrontation or that the restaurant has caught fire and is endangering the neighbors around it. No business is more important than the safety of the people who live in its neighborhood. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Megan Tyone. Megan, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Remember two weeks to slow the spread? Do you remember why we said that? To keep hospitals from being impacted. Over time, this became a non-issue. I never thought I'd see this day in America, a small business punished for simply trying to provide for their family. And for what? The false assumption that restaurants spread COVID. Follow the science unless that science is inconvenient. The fact that there is zero evidence that Tin Horn Flats has spread COVID. This fact means Tin Horn is not in violation of Burbank's Condition of Approval Number 32. Meanwhile, we have no problem with hundreds of shoppers entering big corporations. So let's crush the little guy, and let's make sure all the power and money goes into the elite. As a Burbank resident, it's incredibly heartbreaking to see failed and struggling businesses. Many lost literally everything they worked for. But hey, at least they follow the rules, am I right? No one is forced to go to Tin Horn. If you're afraid, then stay away. I repeat, no one is forced to go into Tin Horn. Freedom in America, that's the point. The City Council can't stand the fact that they are unable to control Tin Horn Flats and a 20-year-old. Stop wasting our tax dollars on arresting looters. Stop wasting our tax dollars on round-the-clock surveillance for a business just trying to provide for their family. It's pathetic. Follow the science. In America, we have the freedom to choose if we want to risk our fragile lives walking through the doors of Tin Horn Flats for burgers and beer than we should be free to. You say no one is above the law, but the thing is, Tin Horn doesn't want to be above the law. COVID mandates are not law. Tin Horn wants to be in perfect operating condition. But how can they make that happen? By simply giving them their permits and their power back. You had no right to remove them in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Angie Cheng. Angie, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, nice to talk to you. So my question was, who initiated the shutdown of Tin Horn Flats in Burbank?
We're not allowed to respond back. We're allowed to listen for your input?
For the question? Were we supposed to ask a question?
No, ma'am, we're not allowed to.
To respond to questions? Okay, and I'd also like to know who authorized it? And why is it, is it specific to Burbank? Or is it a state, city, or, you know, like what, what's the boundary for that? Because this has happened to other states as well, and they've been able to stay open through We the People and by keeping, keeping it self-run. And I just want to know where in the Constitution and where in American government does it say that this is okay to just board up a business when other businesses are open? Just because they have different, you know, different guidelines of something that isn't a federal law?
Are you, are you done with your comments, ma'am?
Well, are you, are you going to respond at all, or?
No, ma'am. We're just here listening before we go into our closed session meeting.
Okay, well, you know, as, you know, as a small business owner, an entrepreneur, I just think that it's quite unfair when, you know, especially minorities have like worked towards achieving this American dream and to have their business shut down just because when, in reality, it's just a different political idea that isn't dictated by any sort of federal law at the moment. There aren't any masks.
Ma'am, your two, your two minutes are over, ma'am. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Stuart Ridman Espinoza. Stuart, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, council, how are you doing? Is it in my obligation or can I know what your guys' religious background is?
We're only allowed to listen to public comment right now?
Okay, well, okay, well then, if you guys want to talk about Tin Horn, I believe that is, it is unconstitutional what is happening. I believe that everything is being invaded in religious background right now. I'm a religious person. I cannot wear a mask, and, and neither can this Tin Horn Flats. This is, it is a very religious place. They are all about God, and it invades their religion. And I believe, who started it? Who started the initiation to close down Tin Horn Flats? Who started it? Can I get a name, please?
I'm sorry, so we're not allowed to respond during a public comment period?
So you cannot give me a name who initiated the lockdown of Tin Horn Flats in Burbank, where you guys reside? Well, actually, you guys probably don't reside, but you guys resided in council. Can you give me an answer, please? I only have two minutes. Please make it quick.
I'm sorry, sir. Our rules are this is public comment period only where the community can give us input before we go into closed session?
Okay, all right, then I will give you input. So no questions, I got it. So everything that you guys are doing is very unconstitutional. It is destroying our democracy, even though I do not like to say that, but I know you guys believe in that. And it is destroying religion, and it is making people angry. And I don't want to see that because I have no anger or hate in my heart, and I do not want to see my fellow Americans that loved America to be angry and stop doing what you guys are doing. This is horrible. This is unconstitutional. It is a disgrace to America, and every other country is laughing at us. Every other state is laughing at us at this point because other states do not act like this. We need to make California great again.
Thank you, sir, for your time. Your time is up. Thank you for your call and your input, sir. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Maida Takahashi. Maida, you're live with council.
Hi, I was wondering who initially set this up to shut down Tin Horn Flats and turn the water and power off? Because this is absolutely ridiculous, and it's communistic. Because they opened back up without water and power, and like, you're still trying to do the same thing. And now you're showing them down for not having water and power. So I'd like to know who actually did it from the first place.
Sir, we're not allowed to make public comment, answer back. This is your time, up to two minutes, to give us your input before we go into closed session.
Okay. Hello, who's this? Hey, hello?
Hello, you're live with City Council in Burbank.
Hi, yes, yes. My name is, yeah, my name is Takahashi.
Yes, good evening.
Yes, good evening. So we're at Tin Horn Flats, and we want to know, what is the regulation that you have against this establishment?
Sir, we cannot respond. We can only listen to your comments for two minutes before we go into a closed session meeting.
Okay, yes, sir, but I'm asking you a simple question. What is the, what is the regulation that you have against this establishment?
Again, sir, we do not respond back to the public. This is the time for the public to give two minutes of their thoughts.
This is a call from a private citizen.
Yes, sir. But this is the rules of the meeting. You have two minutes to give us your thoughts before we go into closed session.
Thoughts, okay, yeah. What I, what I think you're doing is very uncivil because this is, this is an institution that has been following rules. That has been following the rules. And what I, and I'll tell you what I've.
Sir, your two minutes are over for this call. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Michael Colhouse. Michael, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening to all of you. I remember in the, like, the darkest days of COVID and the pandemic, driving by Walmart in Burbank and seeing lines of people sneaking around the block. And I thought to myself, gosh, that's dangerous. You know, there's all these people lined up there. But I did not see like a single action taken by the city or the police to deal with that issue. However, driving by Tin Horn Flats, of which I'm not a patron, by the way. I've never been there. I went there one time to show them support, and that's it. But I see a police vehicle parked night and day outside the establishment, literally guarding sandbags, guarding sandbags. And I'm just thinking, you know, to the. And I'm just thinking, you know, to the average Joe, it looks, it looks kind of vindictive. And I'm just calling in on, on you, uh, ladies and gentlemen, to just move forward. These things were bound to happen during this pandemic. There is no precedent setting that's happening. You know, neither for, uh, Walmart nor for Tin Horn Flats. Let's just move on. Let these folks get their license back. Let them open back up. No one's forcing people to go there. So just let them be. Uh, thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Gina. Gina, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm calling to ask you to please reopen Tin Horn Flats Bar and Grill and stop harassing this, uh, this business that's trying to, to earn a living and they don't want to be dependent upon the state for their livelihood. They're actually trying to provide jobs for the community. And so I find it egregious that the city has been harassing them and putting them out of business. Need to, uh, take down these, these boards on their business and, and call off the fence that you're attempting to, to put around this property. This is their property. This is their hard labor and sweat and livelihood. And, uh, the government is, the purpose of the government is to protect private property, not to steal it from the people. You have no, you have no right to take someone's property without, uh, recompense, without, uh, paying them for the thing that you're taking. So you need to reimburse them for the lost wages for the time that they've been closed down. And I implore all of you to, uh, to, to take seriously your oath to the constitution, to reread, uh, the constitution and to let you know that the people of the city of Burbank, uh, do not want communism in our city. We want free, freedom and liberty. We want, uh, we want the principle of individuality and self-government and private property. And we expect you to stand for the people and to stop this, this journey. This is ridiculous. It's out of control. You all should be ashamed of your, yourself, what you're doing to this, to this business and to this family and to the city, uh, to residents who enjoy eating the food here. You need to apply the law equally to all businesses. So if Tin Flats can't be open, then you may as well just go shut down every restaurant. But I think the courts are going to have something to say about that. And I think all of your seats are, are on the line and you may not be, be sitting in those council seats much longer if you continue this attack on the people of, of Burbank. So please reopen Tin Horn Flats Bar and Grill and stop, uh, stop making a, you know, making the city of Burbank look ridiculous. Gavin Newsom just said we have the lowest percentage of, uh, COVID in the, in the nation. It's time to open.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sarah Sand. Sarah, you're live with council.
Hi, council, thank you for taking my call. I'm a Burbank high graduate, a Burbank property owner. Ventura County dropped all but one remaining COVID lawsuits once moved to the next tier. Hi. Oh, I believe the city of Burbank should follow that approach such that, such that government actions are not supposed to be punitive, especially once an order that is involved is mute. Please stop your hindering actions against Tin Horn. Burbank has been a haven and LA County amidst crazy city of Los Angeles. The city of Burbank should continue an example in the region rather than follow the lead of lunacy. Better use of effort and publicity would be in seceding from LA County. Thank you. And by the way, if I, I can't ignore Mr. Vice Mayor. You've been shaking your head at public commentators that have been frustrating to you. And please understand that you are expressing your frustration and that is what the public is feeling about council members right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Suzy Erdelian. Suzy, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, I just wanted to call and express a deep concern about what's happening with Tin Horn Flats. Um, you know, I'm noticing a really gross abuse of power being enforced on them. Um, and in no way, shape or form is this pandemic an excuse to ignore the constitution and our rights as citizens and small business owners. Um, you know, we're, as citizens, we're watching very, very closely what's happening. And I don't think that we can sit by and kind of allow this anymore. Um, in no way are we inciting any violence. We just want you to do the right thing and have some integrity for the law. Um, so I urge you to please either resign from office or do the right thing and drop all charges against Tin Horn Flats. You know, it's wasteful, you know, tax dollars, you know, that could be used on something more productive for the community. And, you know, if, if anything, that please note that Gavin Newsom recall is a good reality check for anyone in office who's not going to follow the law and protect our rights as citizens. So I just wanted to state that, um, you know, plead that you do the right thing and drop all charges against them. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Dennis Napolitano. Dennis, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Yes, hi. My name is Dennis Napolitano. I have been a resident and homeowner, taxpaying citizen of Burbank for the last 30 years. Never in the 30 years I've been living here have I seen such tyranny at the highest level. How much longer do you want to keep persecuting this, this poor business? They have been trying to stay afloat and this is not, this is not anything to do with we the people. We don't want any of this. We want to be having our lives free and not having to have this kind of control. We don't need this. We, uh, your people are supposed to be public servants for we the people. Constantine Anthony says on his page, he is for the ma and pa businesses. We have a, a really poor way of showing it when you're shutting down this poor business, right? And if you're not for we the people, we have to do our part to eliminate these people that are not for we the people, as yourselves. We have affidavits that are being signed. We've, I've already processed them and we, and we sent them in. And it's your job to, to actually respond to them. Or we have to keep on going until you have to understand, when are you going to be able to work with these people? These people deserve a lot better than this and what you're doing to them. This is not, this is un, unacceptable. Unacceptable completely. And I think it's unconstitutional. And what you're doing, putting up padlocks and putting up these, uh, plywood and, and sandbags, you know, uh, my tax dollars don't want to pay for that. And we, and it shouldn't. Because this is not what we're all about. We're all, we the people do not like what you're doing and we do not stand with what you're doing. So you need to start working with Tin Horn Flats and really come together. Otherwise, we're going to get you removed from your biz, from, from your office. This is not going to stand. We are going to fight this. There's a protest today. There's a protest tomorrow. There'll be protests all the way through.
Sir, thank you for your call. Uh, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
When I put through?
Our next caller is Ash.
Hi, yeah, um, Burbank City Council, you know, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You guys are supposed to be public servants, right? And you're acting like childish, spoiled little brats, okay? You're acting like the mafioso right now, bullying this poor kid. You're bullying Tin Horn Flats. The guy's not even 21. He's not even legal to drink, okay? You guys had the false pretext of a highly questionable pandemic to try and shut him down. You made it obvious he's trying to shut him down, okay? Questionable pandemic because there was more people who died in the US in 2019 than 2020. Okay, you guys don't want to follow the real science? Tin Horn Flats pays no risk to the general public, okay? This COVID nonsense has got to end, right? We're returning immunity anyway, according to head of ex-Head of Pfizer, Mike, Dr. Michael Yedon. You guys need a reality check, man. You guys are right here now and there's sandbags outside, okay? You guys took his permit away for no valid reason and then you shut down his power and you are getting him arrested three times for having no, no power. You guys are just scoundrels. You guys are the lowest form of pond scum I've ever come across, okay? You guys need to wake up. If this is a proper running country, all you city council members, including Constantine Anthony, you'd be in jail right now, okay? This is communism, guys. This isn't freedom. What happened to the constitution? This guy Lucas has got a right to life, liberty and happiness. And you're trying to take that away from him. You guys need to be ashamed of yourself for no reason, okay? He just wanted to eke out a living. It's his only form of living. What if he took out your income? What if he took out your pension? You wouldn't like that very much, would you? This is just communism. What is this, China or land of the free, home of the brave? This is supposed to be United States of America, okay? You guys, man, oh, shame on you, shame on you. This is just tyranny, medical tyranny. You made it obvious it's, it's personal. Hello?
Sir, thank, thank you for your call, sir. Your two minutes are up. Thank you for your call, sir. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Nathan Helm. Nathan, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, my, I'm, it'll be short and sweet. Uh, the LaPegian family claims that fear and control are the sole purpose for the operating restrictions placed on businesses over the past year and for COVID as a whole. They think there's a global cabal conspiring against them and that deep in a bunker somewhere, the world's elites are rubbing their hands together like supervillains, salivating at the thought of sending some dilapidated hovel of a Western bar into ruin. But really, the only fear and control present is when Tin Horn Flats throw their little right-wing, all-you-can-eat hate parades and my neighborhood is thrust into racist chaos. They claim to be fighting for freedom when all they do is breed hatred. And at a time when it seemed obvious that the world should join as one to overcome something so destructive as COVID-19, LaPegian and Co. continue to double down on contrarian hateful rhetoric. I am a patriot and taking advice on how to be a good American from an arsonist slumlord that lives in Thailand doesn't sound very patriotic to me. Shut down Tin Horn Flats for good so the rest of us can be proud of our neighborhood again. So the rest of us can get one step closer to being proud Americans again. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Matthew Wyborg. Matthew, you're live with council.
Um, thank you for hearing from me. I will start by saying the situation with the protest has gone too far and has become kind of something of a powder keg in the community. The location needs to be permanently shut down and the owners need to be held to the full extent of the law. Tin Horn Flats owners have shown disrespect for the laws time and time again, while the majority of restaurants in Burbank have fully complied with all requests. In their own words, Tin Horn Flats says they refuse to comply. This incident has also become hyper partisan and co-opted by many other movements. If you drive down Magnolia Boulevard during one of their protests, you will see several profanity-laced signs ranging from "Recall Gavin Newsom" or "District Attorney Gaston" to "Anti-mask" or "Anti-vaccine Talking Points." Across the street, pro-Trump and QAnon merchandise is on display and on the sale. City workers have been verbally attacked and in one case, it's caught on video, physically threatened by the protesters. Go to any of Tin Horn Flats social media pages and you'll see thinly veiled threats directed at Councilman Anthony and the Burbank police chief. Some of these comments include people advising Second Amendment solutions. This situation has already caused a major divide and the citizens of Burbank are currently being made worse from out-of-town sympathizers. Currently, there seems to be no sign of either of them coming to understanding. I only see this situation being escalated as the owners continue to take advantage of a political situation for their own monetary gain and things. In closing, I would ask the city of Burbank and this already out-of-control situation before somebody is hurt. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Dawn Gregg. Dawn, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi there. Thank you so much. I'm standing out front of Tin Horn right now with my teenage daughter. And we've been coming, um, you know, almost every day. And, um, I guess I want to ask, you would consider the fact that kids are watching what's happening here? And now that the story's getting national attention, I'm just wondering if there's a way around, a way out of this that isn't any more detrimental to the reputation of Burbank as a city? Because it's so good to us. We love them. We appreciate them. We applaud them. We understand they're in a tight spot. We really, really like this establishment. You know, Tin Horn is a, a local hangout. Everyone that works here is so kind and friendly. Um, the patio, is there a way to open the patio? Some, a way to get around this and to like get out of this now before, it's just such a bad look for Burbank. And, you know, I just think the numbers are growing. I think the attention's going to grow, you know, when I see national news coverage, when I see coverage from other countries. I'm just thinking, Tin Horn looks really good here. And, you know, in the long run, Tin Horn's going to be the hero here. And there's a small window of opportunity for Burbank to come alongside Tin Horn and figure out a way, um, not to lose face, but to, to, you know, to come alongside the hero in this story. We live in Burbank, California. This is movie town. People like heroes. People like the narrative of a hero. And you guys are blowing it so big time. You could be leading the way in this national story.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you for your comments and your call. Your two minutes are over. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Nick. Nick, you're live with council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. I wish we could be doing this in person, but, uh, anyway, I, I just, I'm calling with regard to Tin Horn Flats. And I'm, I want to express my extreme disappointment in what I've been hearing and what I've been witnessing, uh, over these last several months with the actions of, of Burbank City Council. And, you know, looking at it from a, a legal perspective as well as just from a common sense perspective, I think what is being done is, is extremely, uh, egregious and unnecessary. You know, when you look at, and I'm, I'm sure you've been studying the science and the studies and looking at, you know, uh, especially when it comes to restaurants, you know, they've found that, that a very, very small number of cases are coming from restaurants. And so, so to shut down a restaurant that has no record of any cases coming out of is just, to me, is, it doesn't make any sense. Especially since they were also operating outdoors and they were doing everything with, you know, cleanliness and they were keeping everything sanitized and their servers were wearing masks. And so they were complying with, you know, what could be considered safety measures and they weren't putting anybody at risk. And now to see that you boarded up their business and prevented this man from essentially feeding his family and the people that work there from feeding their families is, to me, is unconscionable. And you should be ashamed of yourselves for doing this. And now I see that you're out here and you're going to have the city putting up a barrier around this man's private property. How dare you? What is the matter with you people? Are, are we in an authoritarian country right now? Is this a communist country? You should be ashamed of yourself for the actions that you're taking against a citizen of the United States and a citizen of the city of Burbank. This is absolutely unacceptable and you should be ashamed of yourself. And, and I'm, and I'm sure you will be held to account for your actions. And I'm calling upon Burbank City Council to immediately reinstate this man's business license and the health permit due to county and turn his power back on.
Sir, thank you for your call. Your two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Renee. Renee, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Uh, first of all, Mr. Anthony has said he has heard from a lot of, um, non-Burbank residents. Well, I'm a 30-year resident and homeowner. And I remember last year when the barber shop was defiant and was on the news and they didn't close down and all that. They still exist. They stayed open. They managed and they moved on. And some of the gyms did that here, too. And I was actually very scared about the protests and the riots that were going on in our city and everything was boarded up. And, you know, I didn't have to go to Tin Horn Flats and I never did. And another thing is, they're not a essential place to go to get my products. So when I would go to the Walmart, the market, other establishments, I was more afraid of that than Tin Horn Flats, okay? And another thing, I wore a mask before the government even told us to, as they said, "Don't wear a mask, don't wear a mask." I wear a mask. I wore a mask before. I'll wear a mask afterward. It has nothing to do with a mask. Burbank needs to move on from the Tin Horn Flats issue and just drop it. Ventura did. Ventura's a great place to live. Burbank was a great place to live and I hope it still can be one. But ever since this Mr. Anthony came into our city, it's just been like a plague. I just, I don't understand. You know, i- it's not a right or left thing. It's the right thing. So Burbank, let's keep the charm. Let's stay alive and don't let other people influence you. There's a lot of good people here in Burbank and you're just making it seem so, it's all over the, it's just, it's a joke. But thank you for listening. I hope you will just work something out, find them, whatever you have to do, and let them move on and let everybody move on and worry about the crime, people speeding, and other issues going on here in Burbank. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Alan Turian. Alan, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome. Yes, thank you for letting us talk to you. Um, I have just a few questions here. Um, what grade would you give yourselves over the last 14 months to the way you've uh, dealt with the COVID situation? And do you feel preferential treatment was given by the city of Burbank, the street food vendors, homeless people, large corporations, and um, the teachers unions? Um, I, I had thought the rules were all over the place and not at all uniform. My next question is, did any of you or anyone employed by the city of Burbank miss a single paycheck the last 14 months? It's, it's very hard to judge other people when you're getting paid and the people you represent are not. Um, Americans have never faced anything like this over the last 220 years and it's hard to adjust sometime when you feel like we're being told, "Do as I say, do, not as I do." Uh, one of the council members said the other day that he is pro-small business. Paying police to watch a, a bar with sandbags in front of it, the risk reward ratio of that is insane. Um, I think you've probably meant well, but I think you've turned a lot of people against you because I think the law in Burbank has been very selectively, um, enforced. And, um, you know, I am a board member of a school here. I worked there for nine years and I know that sometimes the laws in Burbank are not equally enforced at all. And I could go into a long spiel about months of dealing with the mayor's office about some of this, but I won't. But thank you for your time and I, I hope you realize that some people that lose their businesses are not always the most rational folks and, and try to be kind to them as best you can until we all get back on our feet. And, and thank you so much for letting us speak, okay?
Thank you for your call, sir. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Gia Jones. Gia, you're, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello. I just want to say that you have no lawful authority to close down Tin Horn Flats. There's no evidence of any emergency. Therefore, any emergency orders are null void and unlawful and may be successfully challenged in court. No governor or health officer has the authority to shut down this business without due process of law, which has been missing. That means no sheriff or health officer can close this business or revoke the license without a hearing, which has not been done. You cannot lose your liquor license. We can't lose our liquor license here with, uh, unless we serve alcohol to minors, which hasn't happened. There's no law or regulation requiring Tin Horn Flats or prohibiting Tin Horn Flats from serving patrons indoors or outdoors. There's no lawful order that requires Tin Horn Flats or employees to wear masks, distance or limit, limit the number of patrons. And you have a legal, we have a legal right to operate our business the way we want. And our business is our property and you have nailed something into our property, damaging our personal property. And, uh, you're not licensed to dispense medical advice by, uh, advising or forcing us or citing us, Tin Horn Flats, for not wearing masks. Amendment one of the Constitution, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press. The right of the people to peacefully assemble, which is what happens when people are gathered here at the business, is their rights. Amendment four, the right of the people to be securing their persons' houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated. No warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, which is what you've done to Lucas and his unlawful. Amendment five, no person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on a presentment or indictment of a grand jury, except in cases arising in the land or naval forces or in the militia when in actual service in time of war or public danger. No shall any person be subject for the same effect to be twice put in jeopardy of life or death. Nor shall be compelled in any criminal case to be away from to get himself, nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law.
Sir, excuse me, your, your time is up. Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Marcelo Lopez. Marcelo, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We hold this truth to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they're endowed by their Creator with certain unable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever in any form of the government becomes destructive of this end, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute a new government, laying its foundations on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. I'm sure most of you have never heard of that, of the way you act towards us, the people. I know Mr. Fudos for sure has heard those words before because of your background in the L A, LAPD. And for sure, you, you called to defend the Constitution, Mr. Fudos, when you decided to take your job in the LAPD. And you know that when, when you were a police, there was a lot of people in government that pushed laws that you thought weren't right. And you fought against those government officials because you thought those laws were going against the Constitution. And now, while you're sitting in power, you're instituting some of those laws that you defended people from. So I ask you guys, how many restaurants are not gonna open back because they took your advice and they closed their business? Are you, how many are, is it, how many is it? Do you guys know how many closed in Burbank and not, they're not gonna open back again? Is one okay? Is two okay? Three? Ten?
Sir, thank you for your call, sir. Thank you for your, your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Asai. Asai, you're live with counsel.
No, Abby, Abby. Hi. Um, yes, I'm calling because, uh, actually, I sent an email, uh, a week ago to Constantine and, uh, I gave my address and my address is Marina Del Rey and he was very flippant about that. And I just, um, you know, all my, all of our taxpayer dollars, the fact that you're getting response from people outside of Burbank should tell you something. Should tell you that there's, uh, a need to maybe change the way you're thinking. I don't know why you think you're in a bubble that nobody besides Burbank matters when we're all in LA County, uh, because we're all paying taxes here. And, um, basically, uh, Tin Horn Flats has a right to their property. Uh, you can't give somebody, uh, um, not let somebody be at their business, uh, that, I've never heard of that before. Uh, the business is their property and this is theft and deprivation of their rights. That's a felony. There's no law prohibiting people who, from, from serving their patrons outdoors right now. There's, there's no law against that. And for you to keep this going, keep, keep this, uh, when you know that you've already changed the law or changed the rule because there's no law, there's never a law, but this is like a little rule that you guys are making, um, you're, you're, you're going against yourself. And, um, there's no governor or health officer that has authority to shut down a business without due process of law.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you for your input. The two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Stuart Morishige. Stuart, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, uh, I'd just like to say, uh, I'm really glad you guys are doing everything that you can to get that place closed. Uh, I've been actively avoiding that place ever since these, these things started. Uh, it feels kind of dangerous now just to be in that area and I, I just been actively telling people to avoid that place. So keep doing what you're doing. Thank you so much. That's my time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Chantal Castillo. Chantal, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, honorable city council members. As a resident, I appreciate the opportunity to share my opinion. Tin Horn Flats has blatantly defied county health orders that were aimed at minimizing spread of COVID-19 during a time when the numbers and hospitalizations were at their highest. As a high-risk individual, their behavior put me at an even higher risk because they continued to gather and serve customers when all dining at restaurants was prohibited and their selfish, entitled, and dismissive behavior spread and fostered in the community and influenced others to participate in behavior that helped to spread the virus. I cannot verify the veracity of this, but from my research online, the owner, Barrett LaPegian, appears to be very affluent and has many other sources of income, so his and his family's claim that this was their only source of income is false. Additionally, he is currently hiding in Thailand and letting his young adult children face the consequences of his initial actions, which is cowardly in my opinion. By Tin Horn Flats continuing to operate in defiance of county health orders, court orders, and the decision of the city, it is a giant slap in the face to the other businesses who are complying with the health orders, especially for those business owners whose businesses truly were their main sources of income. I am grateful for the action that the city has taken to show Tin Horn Flats that equalness cannot be violated and to protect the health and safety of the residents of the city of Burbank, but I feel that the city needs to take stronger action because no one is above the law or legal mandate and nothing that has been done so far, nothing that has been done so far means anything to Tin Horn Flats. Please don't give in to their small amount of local, very vocal supporters. I hope that Tin Horn Flats is permanently shut down because they are disgrace to the city and a hazard and they are not a reflection of the Burbank that I am proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next speaker is Anonymous. Uh, sir, you may begin your public comment.
Welcome. I, uh, I'm calling to simply say as a Burbank resident that, um, I think Tin Horn Flats should be shut down and done away with for good. Uh, honestly, I'm surprised they still haven't been. Uh, I, I often read how their supporters often use the argument like, "Why not just let them make a living?" But in all honesty, I think Burbank has done so. Yeah, you can look at how many other restaurants have stayed alive. Heck, if a tiny little shack like Corner Cottage could survive, there's absolutely no reason Tin Horn Flats should be an exception. If their out-of-town supporters really care for the restaurant and survival, they could still order takeout. But then they'll say, "Well, what about tips?" And their employees getting paid. Well, you can still tip on takeout orders if you want, you know? So to me, it just makes it seem like it's not actually about having the business survive, but rather arguing out of spite for the love of conspiracy theories. They repeatedly put residents in danger by defying state, county, and city rules. There's even footage of them harassing a polite news reporter for wearing a mask. Uh, you know, when I first heard about this, I dismissed the news because I was sure Burbank would close them up for good and do away with them. The fact it's dragged on this long is kind of absurd in my opinion. Um, you know, other restaurants have, abided by the rules. So like, are we just gonna let anyone who blatantly defies a rule then puts others' health at risk? Go? I mean, can I go on and totally disregard parking tickets every time street cleaning occurs with no actual penalty? I mean, I hear about other places like the Enrich Fit Gym doing the same thing as Tin Horn Flats. You know, what's gonna prevent other businesses from doing the same and harming others' health and doing hazardous if they see Tin Horn Flats get away with all this? And now they keep a masking around Naomi Street and Guanavista on Saturdays. And it makes me personally feel uncomfortable to even just go to the Hanny Market to get my Saturday barbecue because these guys are like flies and will harass any and everyone that comes by. And, uh, you know, overall, Burbank has generally been a, a calm and peaceful city that I've grown, you know, I've grown up here. Uh, lived here, loved, I love it here. It's calm and peaceful. And someone who recently lost my father's COVID, I'm just one of these hazardous texts that have been tolerated.
Sir, your, your, sir, your two minutes, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sydney Shane. Sydney, you're live with counsel.
Thank you. Hi. Hi, thank you. Um, I'm calling on behalf of Tin Horn Flats. I, I think that you guys should let them open up. I mean, they're a small business. You know, they're not hurting anyone. I feel like, you know, if they're, you know, they're being made an example of is what it feels like. And, um, they, you know, if you have documented cases, like increased cases coming out of there from them being open, that's one thing, but I don't know that there is that. And I think it's, you know, you have to trust individual citizens to choose to go to a place or not go to a place. And I mean, this is not something like nationwide Walmart or something, you know, this one small business. And it's, you know, that's gonna ruin his life. So I just think that's wrong. And, you know, when it comes time to, to voting time, there's a lot of people that feel this way. I don't know if they're calling or not. I was number 33 in the, in the line, but there's a lot of people that feel this way. And we, we are knowing who's making these, um, choices and, and voting. And so when it comes election day, we are going to vote for the people that protect our freedom. And so I hope, I hope that you do the right thing and make that choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Maryland. Maryland, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I, thank you for taking my phone call. Um, I want to speak in support of Tin Horn Flats. Um, I have been coming to Tin Horn Flats since 1988. It's a wonderful restaurant. It's a family-owned business. There's lovely people. They make you feel like you're part of the family. Um, what you're doing to them is not fair, it's not right, and it's not American. You really, please, need to open them back up again and allow them to go back into business again. It's just, again, it's just not right. And as everyone else has pointed out too, it's not constitutional. So please, 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 I beg you, please open them back up again. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jeff. Jeff, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, thank you for taking my call. Uh, I just wanted to say, as a Burbank resident for, gosh, 15 years now, I have never, uh, actively felt scared to live here until now, walking past Magnolia and seeing all those cosplay patriots get up in their tack gear, posturing, and, uh, playing would-be insurrectionist. I strongly urge the council to take some stronger measures. Uh, this is, I've heard from friends in New York, I've heard from friends in Florida saying, what is going, like, they've seen articles in their local papers. And that's just horrifying. In the middle of the worst public health crisis that any of us will ever experience in our lifetimes, these people are playing civil war boogaloo and embarrassing the city. So I strongly urge the city to actually take something with teeth, uh, to enforce the laws. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Elizabeth Karinson. Elizabeth, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I have been a Burbank resident now for 16 years. Um, I feel this is going against Amendment 1, 8, 9, and 10. This is a blatant overreach of government with all the businesses that have closed in our city. This, this to me is bullying hardworking Americans. I feel there are, that they are being targeted for their, uh, political views. Please don't waste our taxpayers' money and go any further. Focus on rebuilding our small businesses and our homeless problem. And focus on, uh, reprimanding Anthony Constantine and his horrible agenda to defide our city. Let all unite and heal, please.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Asia Mukha. Asia, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Uh, good evening. Um, I am calling in support for Tin Horn Flats. Um, I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. I hope to see this family back in business very soon for the betterment of the community. Um, I have a message for, uh, for Constantine Anthony. Uh, Constantine, I went to your website and it's very inspiring. Actually, I relate to many things you speak about. But what caught my eye is that you speak about being homeless and wanting to help those in need. Also, you mentioned you will do everything in your power to protect the mom-and-pop businesses in the Magnolia Park area. Well, that's exactly where, um, Tin Horn is and that's what they are. So I hope you will stand by your word. And I, I think you have a great opportunity, actually, um, to uplift people instead of tear them down and really unite, um, reunite everybody. And also, you know, for the, um, for the betterment, uh, of the community and to help the economy thrive. And I hope we can all work together in that. So thank you for your time, everyone. Good evening. Good night.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next speaker is Kai Willis. Kai, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I live down the street from Tin Horn Flats, me and my family. And there are people in my family in, in at-risk group for COVID. And we haven't gotten to got, get vaccines yet or anything. Avoiding this virus is like life and death for us. It breaks my heart to see that Tin Horn Flats and some of its patrons just callously disregarding the safety of their neighbors. Um, I'm really appreciative and thankful to the city council for the work they've done to remove this hazard. Uh, thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tom Clone. Tom, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you for, uh, taking my call. Uh, just wanted to say quickly, as, uh, probably one of the few residents who actually live and work here in Burbank for nearly 30 years, I just wanted to applaud the council for taking a, uh, a good, hard-line position against business that is, uh, outwardly going against health and safety conditions of all the other. And trying to turn this into some kind of a political movement and seems to just be attracting outsiders who don't live or have anything to do with Burbank coming in and just try to, you know, cause problem and get publicity. Uh, so I, I just hope you guys, uh, you know, stick to your guns on this. Uh, this is really just a health and safety violation, not a political movement, and, uh, that we can all just, uh, put this aside. A business can either comply or close down and the rest of us can go on and live our lives here in Burbank, uh, like we should. Nice and safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd like to remind all the callers and the community members wishing to, uh, give your input. All of us council members are listening actively, but please remember to call this phone number. Call 818-238-3335. Again, the phone number to call, to weigh in to the council before we go into closed session and talk about Tin Horn Flats. Please call 818-238-3335. Do not call the WebEx number. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sam. Sam, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Frutos. It's, uh, good to see you again. Sharon, hello, Vice Mayor Talamontes, good to see you as well. Um, we wanted to just call in and, uh, I, uh, don't envy you your, your task here, um, but I appreciate the leadership that you've been showing. I know it's difficult to listen to these people call in and lambast you for attempting to do what you swore to do. Um, I believe that what's going on in Magnolia Park around Tin Horn Flats is more than a public nuisance. It's a public menace. And during an unprecedented health crisis, uh, I really do appreciate the city council doing this by the book. And I would also appreciate them holding these criminals accountable. None of us should be allowed to flout the law so frequently and not expect to have repercussions. Uh, I do know some people are frustrated because it seems the city's response has been slow and ineffective. Uh, but those of us who have worked in the unique experience of, uh, civil government know how things sometimes move at a glacial pace. I, uh, just want to urge you, the members of the council, the state, of course, that your leadership means a lot to us here. And these interlopers coming from outside of the city with their sovereign citizens' talking points are dangerous and are just here to sow discord. I don't appreciate that as a Burbank resident, and I do appreciate you, the council, continuing. Mayor, I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Emily Wayless. Emily, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Um, good evening, council. My name is Emily and I've been a resident of Burbank for the past decade. I'm a proud union member, living and working in the city of Burbank. And my union kin and I are the labor that elevates Burbank to having the title of media capital of the world. The owner of Tin Horn Flats is repeatedly disregarding laws and overtly relishing in the attention at the cost of public health. The very least that should happen is that Tin Horn Flats should be absolutely shut down permanently, and anything short of that is unacceptable to me. Without swift action and definitive action, this is a prime example of a different set of rules for the rich and the wealthy versus the working class. This guy has a $3 million house for sale, and that's insane. Thank you for your time, and may you and your loved ones be healthy and well.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask the name of that last caller from Desiree?
Sure.
Uh, the last caller was Emily Wallace.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next caller, please.
Coming through, mayor.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Arnel Juan. Arnel, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. Um, just to let you know, I'm a city of Burbank resident for over a decade now. And I'm calling to, um, express my support for the city of Burbank's, uh, decision to go after the establishment. Um, if they had only followed the rules and regulations from the beginning, they would have been open by now. So I hope the city of Burbank will continue to do the right thing, go after them to the fullest extent of the law, and not be swayed by the people who may not be even residents of the city of, uh, Burbank. So again, I applaud the work that the city of Burbank's doing, specifically the city council, and hopefully you guys stay safe and be well.
Thank you for your call. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tony Moon. Tony, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, thank you, Burbank City Council, and thank you for taking this call and, uh, opening up the call lines for people such as myself. I'm very surprised and appalled that the city council is making this much effort to go after a small, uh, hole-in-the-wall business that has nothing to do with the case numbers of deaths in the city whatsoever. And they're actually putting the screws to a 20-year-old kid who's basically just trying to create, create a livelihood for himself by, by keeping his establishment open, even though he's a co-partner with his father. What I don't understand, if the city of Burbank is putting this amount of effort and, uh, just taxpayer funds in order to close this business, where is the flip side of this in terms of trying to help businesses in Burbank, small businesses open and reopen, when everyone's gone through a year's worth of pandemic lockdown? Has the city Burbank, the city council come up with any way of, uh, grants, city grants or city loans that they can provide to small businesses so that they can, they can stay open? Have you done anything at all besides basically collecting a check for the past year when everybody else is struggling to survive small businesses that have employees as well? I really would like to know because as a resident of LA County, I am very incensed by this, and I will make sure that the city council is replaced in an upcoming election. Because there's no way that we can have people like this on the city council that don't give a rip about small businesses that are out there right now, especially with what's happened with the pandemic. I'm very, very appalled and I'm very angry and upset with what's happened to the city of Burbank because I do business in the city of Burbank as well. So I would like for the city council to reconsider their decision. And I know you guys have a hand in playing with the health department and helping to make this easier for Tin Horn Flats. So I hope that's something that you guys would consider and move in a different direction, hopefully in a 180, 180-degree different direction that you guys have been going in right now. Because it is not making any of the residents in the city happy. It is not making any of the out, outlying cities' residents happy either in terms of seeing what's going on with the city of Burbank. Um, I thank you for this time, and I really hope you guys would reconsider the direction you guys are taking this. Thank you.
Thank you for your call, sir. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Gwen Mesko. Gwen, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, I am a Burbank resident. I actually moved here a year ago after working here for six years. Um, I wanted to thank you all very much for your dedication through actually carrying out the law and actually upholding the constitution. Um, unlike, I believe, a majority of the callers, I do have a law degree and understand the basis for the actions you've taken. Um, it's helped me feel safer here as a resident. I do have two small children. We live in Magnolia Park. And recently, with the uptick of what seemed to me to be very much outsiders from outside Burbank, from outside Los Angeles County even, coming into quote-unquote protest, I have seen hate speech on signs. I have had hate speech shouted as I drive by with megaphones. I have seen graffiti demeaning members of the city council, as well as demeaning racial groups and others in Burbank. This is the most unsafe I have felt anywhere I have lived in 40 years of being an American citizen. And I urge you to stay the course to shut down Tin Horn Flats and to make it so that it is no longer a safe haven for insane people from all over the state, from all over the country. It has become an outlet for hate. That is not what Burbank stands for. Please continue your work. Please continue to uphold the law and please shut them down for good. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
All right, thank you.
Our next caller is Brian. Brian, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for, uh, taking a moment to, uh, let me address you guys. Um, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate everything the city council is doing. And I want to make sure you know that there are a lot of Burbank residents, probably more than you know, uh, that fully support everything the council's been doing with their, uh, I guess you'd say, conflicts with Tin Horn Flats. Um, myself, like, pretty much everybody I know through my social groups, our kids' school group, our neighborhood groups, everyone has been very sort of, uh, trying to be nice with words, but a little offended and disgusted by the actions of Tin Horn Flats and how they have sort of turned up their nose, not just at the law and the city council, but also at all these other mom-and-pop business owners in the city that work so hard to create a great environment for our town, um, and have followed the rules to try to also put community first and try to keep us safe. And so I just want to thank you guys for everything you have done to try to hold Tin Horn Flats accountable, uh, for their actions that frankly, I think, sort of turned their nose up, not just at the city council, but at all of our residents and the community and all the other mom-and-pop shops in the area. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Christopher Matthew Spencer. Christopher, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Christopher Matthew Spencer. I'm a 30-year resident of the city. Half of my ancestors are East Indian. I've been homeless, broke as a joke, and quad my way out of being poor. I now understand what it means to have to make payroll and balance a budget. I own a home, I own rental properties, and I have businesses all in Burbank. As a disclaimer, I'm not a Tin Horn Flats customer, but you already know I'm a local constitutionalist and an advocate and sentinel for taxpayer and business rights. At least two of you on this Zoom understand with crystal clarity the difference between law and equity. between law and equity. I have asked the city to provide clarity on how much the Tin Horn Flats abatement costs the city and the taxpayers, and that response was never answered. What many who call in may not understand is that our city is operating at a $15 million budget deficit this year, and we cannot afford to keep funding this. The costs include lost opportunities to our business community. While the city has been distracted with this Tony Award-winning theatrical production, with the city as the impresario, it's taking the city eight to 12 weeks to approve the planned checks to start new businesses. That's unacceptable. If the City Council does not amplify its efforts to improve the treatment of our smaller commercial landlords and business owners, I have set aside a lot of my personal money to put up a few ballot measures. My team is ready to start collecting signatures, to ask the residents to vote on making the mayor an elected office, making it a full-time job with a salary, and to replace our city manager with someone who will take the reins to restore Burbank to the community it should be. And we can make the city attorney an elected position as well. I strongly encourage you to mend this relationship and bring this matter to a state of complete. It's time to stop spanking the 20-year-old and have the wisdom to get our community back on track again. Get out of his sandbox and regroup. Time to take the ar- thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call, sir. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Anna. Anna, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi. Thank you so much for hearing me. My daughter and I were just driving by about maybe less than an hour ago, and we stopped over just to see what was going on. We were by ourselves across the street from the protesters, minding our own business. There was nobody around us. But my daughter and I were wearing masks, and then all of a sudden, two people walk over, stating, "Let's see what these people who are not normal, what they want", like targeting myself and my daughter. First, there was two, then there was four, then there was six, then there was like 15. They were getting in our personal space, and given that there was no police present at all, finally, police did come, and they stood afar. They didn't even come in to see what was happening. My daughter had to go over there and ask for assistance to just get these people away from us. Yes, we could have just walked into our car, but we were, at that point, we were outnumbered, and we weren't sure we were safe until the police came and we felt safer. So I think, in the event that the city knows that there's going to be any future protest, and I'm sure they had fair warning, that have more of a police presence so as to have people like myself had nothing to do with the protest, were just sitting there watching, and have some form of protection for us, because we felt like we were kind of in a dangerous situation at that point. First, we were fine, because there was nobody around us, and we were just, my daughter and I, and all of a sudden, there's 15 people around us and getting in our personal space, because, all because we were wearing masks.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jared Moore. Jared, you're live with council.
Hi, good evening, welcome. Hey, how's it going? My name is Jared. I'm speaking as a member of the Burbank community who resides within a mile of Tin Horn Flats, and I specify this in acknowledgement that most of the owner's supporters are not in fact local. This is by design in their efforts to gain attention from a broader scope, as it is well-known that their behavior has little to no support locally. Barrett, the owner, has made it abundantly clear that this is not a business issue. He's actually just kind of hammocking in Thailand while encouraging his son to get arrested, you know, daily like Ronnie Dobbs. But this is one of an issue of his personal politics that have evidently superseded any regard for public health or semblance of decency and respect. This is only reinforced in his public written tirades threatening violence toward people who do not share his political beliefs. This has happened often. One of those beliefs politicizes the current pandemic by asserting that it isn't real, which seems to be a staple among their supporters, as well as the quote, "Don't like it, don't go," which doesn't apply here. And that's because what's been very real throughout this pandemic is that our local emergency care facilities have been overwhelmed and spread extremely thin in terms of capacity. This is an inarguable fact. It is not debatable. There are plenty of people out there who are suffering from, you know, existing conditions and facing threats that regularly exist outside of a pandemic, and not being able to receive care in time is a terrifying and a real concept. Tin Horn's behavior during this time and since has been extremely disrespectful of these types of situations. They argue that there's no proof their actions have contributed to the spread of COVID or emergency care capacity, where I would argue that there's no proof that it hasn't. There is no actual proof that it hasn't, and that's exactly why it's important to err on the side of caution, for the concern and benefit of a community that has supported your business for years. Back scratching, guys, and scratch each other, huh? Tin Horn has not only failed to follow guidelines and respect their community, they vehemently refuse to, which only created more risk as they continued hosting spiteful events without permits or electricity or water. We as citizens are certainly free to be dishonest, obnoxious, inconsiderate, petulant, arrogant, and selfish. I will end there. Use all of those.
Our next caller is April. April, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm a resident of Burbank, and I just wanted to remind you all when you took office to represent the citizens, not the federal government, that you swore an oath to support the Constitution. It probably started something like, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States." You are our elected officials intended to represent the people, the citizens of Burbank. The owner of Tin Horn Flats is a private citizen and a small business owner who's been a victim of government overreach and tyranny like I've never seen in my community. It's unconstitutional to close or limit an operation. It is theft and a deprivation of rights. Title 18 U.S. Code 242 says to willfully subject any person in any state, territory, commonwealth, possession or district to the deprivation of any rights or privileges is a punishable felony. No governor or health officer has the authority to shut down a business without due process of law. If you cannot uphold your oath to support the Constitution and appropriately represent the citizens of the City of Burbank, then you should resign. I'd also like to remind you that the Constitution is the supreme law of the land. According to Article 6, it says this Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof in all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges of every state shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding. The senators and representatives before mentioned, and the members of several state legislatures, and all executive judicial officers, both of the United States and of the several states, shall be bound by oath or affirmation to support this Constitution. I don't see how this is even up for discussion. It seems to me to be very clear according to the law of the land, the Constitution, which you swore an oath to uphold, and I expect you all to do the right thing by dropping all charges and leaving him alone to carry on his inalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And also, I just want to add that Tin Horn Flats is not a dangerous place, nor are any of the people that I know.
Madam, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Justin Trim. Justin, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Hi, so I really just wanted to call and express my support for everything our city government is doing right now in response to the actions by the owners of Tin Horn Flats. I live in Magnolia Park, and I'm particularly disturbed by ongoing social media posts by the owners of Tin Horn Flats that suggest there are factions within the Burbank police that secretly agree with them and support their actions. This I find to be utterly unacceptable. It draws into question the work of our chief of police, our police officers, as well as our entire city government, really. And for that, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your efforts in this bizarre, ongoing campaign that we're having to live through. As someone who lives in the community, I'm very disturbed by the elements they're drawing here, whether it's the crowds that scream about anti-maskings ideas, or I understand last weekend, there was a reenactment of George Floyd's murder. I have no idea what the owners of Tin Horn Flats are trying to do by bringing these people to Burbank, but it's all very disturbing. So all of that said, I wanted to express my thanks to all of you guys. Please keep up the good work, and know that there are very strong feelings in the community that this all just needs to come to an end, please. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jared Smith. Jared, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi. Hi. Hey, it's not Jared Smith. It's Lucas Lopagian. Could you please let me into my own meeting? I mean, I've been trying to join since 5:30, and you guys will not let me join into my own meeting.
Hello?
Yes.
You have two minutes of input for the council.
Okay, okay. It's Lucas Lopagian. Please let me into my own meeting.
I think you have the wrong meeting, sir. This is the Burbank City Council meeting.
Yeah, I know. We're talking about my own restaurant, Tin Horn Flats. My name is Lucas Lopagian. Let me into my own meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry. Madam City Attorney, can you weigh in, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me explain. The council's going to be meeting in closed session. That's only councils allow, no members of the public. This part is an open session, and it's for people to call in and discuss, and they have two minutes apiece, no matter who you are. This is not anybody's meeting except the City Council's meeting. So if you have something to say, you have two minutes. Thank you. Otherwise, you can move him out of order and move on, Madam, Mr. Mayor.
No, I joined the last time. I already joined the last time.
Out of order. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Mark. Mark, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I have been a resident of Burbank for six years and have worked in Burbank for 13 years. I want to say that there has not been one valid claim of any hospitalization or death linked to the opening of Tin Horn Flats. All businesses in LA County are now permitted to be open, both indoor and outdoor dining. They currently follow all the laws and safety guidelines. They simply wanted to exercise their freedom to run a business. That's how this all started. The only reason this business is currently in violation is because the city has pulled their CUP, cut off their power, and blocked their doors. Again, the only violations they are in right now have been created by the government, not Tin Horn Flats. What the city is doing is engaging in a personal vendetta and unrightfully crushing a small business owner for political purposes. The vast majority of Burbank residents either do not care that Tin Horn Flats is open, or are very, very strongly in support of them being open. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Randy Moore. Randy, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello, thanks for your time. Yeah, the common word I keep hearing tonight is rules, that, you know, Tin Horn is breaking the rules. I would like to hear someone cite a penal code as to what law they've actually broken, because there are mandates and there are rules, and the First Amendment says that no mandate or rule will supersede an amendment. So, and I've heard a lot of people say this tonight, that, you know, you guys are stepping on the constitutional right. So, you know, there's any educated attorneys out there, this is your opportunity for a slam dunk case to take the Burbank City Council, and, you know, this can actually reflect on your livelihood, too. You're violating this guy's civil rights. I mean, they can come for your homes, your cars, and all your fancy stuff. So, I mean, think about that, and people have brought up the Gavin Newsom, you know, situation that's going on. That can be you guys, too, you know? So, you know, when you go to sleep tonight and the avalanche of truth hits you from all these calls, I didn't think it was going to be a roast like this. I thought it'd be like half and a half. But it's pretty amazing how many people out there probably know the law more than you, and they're calling in and probably enlightening you as to the Constitution, and that's you guys took a vote for the Constitution, and now you're just, you know, you're running a steamroller over it. I mean, that's shameful stuff, you know? If you're going to do something, say you're going to stand behind something, then do it. Don't flip the switch just because, you know, someone's throwing a couple dollars in your face. Do what's right. Let the guy stay open. Don't step on his rights. And like I said, if there's any attorneys out there that want to take this case, this is a slam dunk. It'll probably make you famous. This is Burbank. People have said this is the movie capital. I might make a movie about this.
Sir, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Victor Price. Victor, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome. Well, howdy, council. I have been fortunate enough in the last 30 years to have gotten my union card and worked at Burbank Studios, oh, half dozen, dozen times over that time. But before all the pandemic, we were a very divided country. You can look at any 200 people, no doubt, 100 of them didn't vote your way. And the thing is, restaurants and stuff, it's hard to stay open. I don't know all the issues about this particular restaurant, what's happening there, but it sounds like maybe they're trying to turn it into something, you know, political, and they kind of got you going with them. We really should be trying to get all the work back to LA and the United States. All the acting seems to be going to Canada, and it seems to be going elsewhere. We're bringing a lot of, for example, black actors from England. We got them here. Why say, "Why don't we use them here?" You know, it's bring the work back. Burbank's known for, it used to be known for all the TV and movies, and it's what's happened, you know? I might have to go into making documentaries or something, because with so little production, children still have to learn, and we're going to have to quickly make some educational documentaries just to play catch-up on the educational thing. That's where Burbank can contribute. But I think that this restaurant issue is pulling your energy away, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Susan Kaplan. Susan, you're live with council.
Hello, mayor, council. Thank you for taking my call. I want to acknowledge the very, pardon me, the very professional way you've dealt with this issue. It's unfortunate that people are coming at you from all sides, hearsay and opinions instead of truthful statements, just for doing your job. It's clear that while loud- It's clear that while loud has no connection to legal, it does seem to raise the level of victimhood. My sympathies to the immediate neighbors, both residential and business. This spectacle must be exhausting. I have heard so many terms like unconstitutional, illegal, tyranny, and other dramatic terms that really have no applicable use here. It seems that everyone has become a constitutional scholar on behalf of their cause. I commend you for keeping a straight face through this comment segment. I want you to know that I appreciate that you are following the law and I encourage you to continue pursuing this situation to the appropriate legal end. I also want to do a shout-out to the Burbank Police Department. They really get it from both sides, and I think they've been acting quite professionally. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you all have a good day.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Glenn Gregos. Glenn, you are live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, Mayor and Vice Mayor, council members. Thanks for taking the time. My family's lived in Burbank since 1951. I went to all Burbank schools. I've had a business in Burbank. I've owned property in Burbank. I still own several properties. And I've written to Councilman Nick, who responded back to me twice very confidently. And I've written to Councilmember Anthony, who I never heard back from. Unfortunately, I know you guys are busy, but I think getting back to us citizens would help. I am a little bit dismayed, as a former business owner here and as a landowner currently, that Burbank would send a SWAT team to a hamburger stand. I mean, guys, get a grip. It's time to figure out how to settle this thing. And that's what I would expect from the city council. I realize that Mr. Lepagian has been, you know, throwing a lot of mud at you guys, but the time to settle is now. Get us past it. Get the city moving and heal us. I own property in Magnolia Park, and it is like a desert there. Store after store is already empty. And I want to tell you one other thing, too, and I think it's very important. All the restaurants that are open right now on the patio, they're supposed to have their customers with a mask on for all times, except when they're eating, for all times when the server comes to the table. Nobody is doing this, and you guys aren't going after them. So, you know, it's a little bit of selective prosecution here, and I think that you really need to think long and hard about how you want to treat the citizens and what you want the city to be known for. And hopefully, it's business friendly. And I know you're a great group of people, that that's what you want. And this has been a terrible, tragic situation for all of us, so hopefully you can get us past it. Appreciate your time, guys and ladies.
Thank you for your call, sir. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Miriam Jamison. Miriam, you are live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for taking my call. I would like to speak in favor of Tin Horn Flats. This is an innocent restaurant, a small business. Mom and pop, they're trying to make a living like everybody else. They've been shut down. Their electricity was turned off by the city of Burbank, and then Building and Safety basically raided them or shut them down for not having electricity. This is an outrageous attack on a mom and pop small business. Today I was there. I saw Burbank is drilling holes in the sidewalk, which actually blocks the flow of traffic, blocks pedestrians, and blocks disabled people because they're planning to build an illegal wall around this private business to further oppress the owner who's been arrested illegally three times. This is a city that allows vagrancy, drugs, camping on sidewalks, illegal taco stands on the sidewalks with no hand washing. And here, somebody who's abiding by the law, has a legal restaurant, paid all his bills, dedicated his life to owning and operating this restaurant that's been an asset to Burbank. He's being treated like a criminal. And everybody on this city council should be ashamed of themselves, especially Anthony Constantine, who is an avowed communist, has ties to unions, and he's on the city council for the purpose of overturning capitalism. He's un-American. He's attacking this business because he favors Walmart and Amazon and all the large companies who have not been shut down and who have tripled their profits during this whole Corona situation for the past year. And as a citizen, I demand justice for this restaurant, and I demand all of you, follow your oath of office to support the Constitution and to give Tin Horn Flats their utilities back, which they should never have been turned down, should never have been turned off. The police of Burbank need to honor their oath of office. There's nothing in the Constitution that says it's illegal to operate a business and sell hamburgers and beer to the public in a safe and legal manner. And this is outrageous, the way this man has been treated. You should not be a citizen...
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Your two minutes are over, but thank you for your input. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Holly Cleland. Holly, you are live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, welcome, Bob. I am a lifetime resident of Burbank. I'm having a really difficult time with what you're doing to Tin Horn Flats. Half the businesses I've worked for in Burbank are gone, never to come back.
Hi, welcome, Bob. I am a lifetime resident of... Oh, it stopped.
Hey, we're giving you loud and clear, Holly. Keep going, please.
Okay, anyways, I have a problem with Constantine Anthony. Last July, he started a Burbank bigots page against Tin Horn Flats and myself. And would post photos of us. It's up to 300 people in Burbank. This shows a bias. I think he's a radical socialist, and he's taking vengeance out on Tin Horn Flats where there has never been any COVID problems there. If you can see anybody that got sick there or anywhere around, it might be a different story. That never happened. You're going after small business. It's wrong. Lancers just sold because they couldn't survive to a guy, and the new owner's three days old. It's like, this is sad, pathetically sad what you're doing. You're going against the Constitution and the freedom of we, the people. I'm a flag waver down there. I speak to everyone from Burbank that's there. It's people that are local, and they're pissed off. You're going against conservative values. You have a bias. And we've served you 200 affidavits, and we went toward Constantine Anthony and Sharon Springer because you're off the charts. And you didn't respond, and you had 10 days to respond, and you swept that under the carpet. And putting a fence up around or sandbagging that business is against the Eighth Amendment of radical overstep. This is an overstep. You guys are dead wrong, and you need to change your ways.
Thank you, Holly, for your input. Thank you for your points. Two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Ben Teligen. Ben, you are live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, city of Burbank. It's me again. Have you guys seen influenza A and B around lately? According to the California Department of Public Health, zero people got the flu last week, a week 13 of official flu season that started on September 27. So, zero people got influenza A, zero people got influenza B. You know why? Because you guys are complicit in switching the flu influenza numbers with the COVID numbers. Even those are going down. When's the last time that you took your doctor, I mean, took yourself to the doctor, and they saw you with the flu and they had a surgical mask on or an N95? Never. Never. You didn't see the nurses, none of your pediatricians when you took your kids to get sick. None of us have a memory with the physician when they had a mask on. When a firefighter goes into a building, they have SCBA, a sealed, self-contained breathing apparatus around them that requires a full-face air seal against their face in order for it to work. And they bring an extra one for you. Obviously, it doesn't work that well if you have facial hair. Police don't use an N95 mask or a surgical mask when they go out and have tear gas and rioters, not really people, because it requires a full-face seal. They don't wear those things. They wear a full-face gas mask with the proper filter. So, what are we doing here? All these other businesses that are quote-unquote "open" at 25% or 30%, they're open at 100%. Go check them out. Go waste the city dollars and go find them. Leave Tin Horn Flats alone. Because if you don't, guess what? We're gonna come after you guys, legally, of course, and hold you guys complicit for killing people. Okay? We got hydroxychloroquine. We got ivermectin. We got this drug called remdesivir. I'm sure you've heard of it. Thousands of dollars. Okay? You guys weren't advocating that drug even, even though you guys probably made money off of it, probably. We got this new drug called, no, it's not a new drug. It's called fluvoxamine. That could save people. And now we have another drug to help people from quote-unquote COVID.
Sir, your two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Steve. Steve, you are live with counsel.
Thank you, council members.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Longtime resident, Magnolia Park homeowner. Let's just cut right to the chase, people. This has nothing to do with Barrett saving his small family business and standing up for the Constitution. We are all quite aware of his violent social media posts threatening our community dating back before the election. This has everything to do with him hoping to get the attention of a failed salesman, steak salesman, for an invite to Mar-a-Lago. Barrett could have hunkered down with the rest of the mom and pop and been an actual member of our little town. He chose not to and turned his back on all of us for a few bucks from conspiracy theorists and likes on social media. If Barrett truly cared about America and family values, he wouldn't have his kid taken the fall while he's selling T-shirts with his kid's mug shot equating Lucas to Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King. And oh, by the way, they're printed by his T-shirt company in Thailand. He would do everything he could to be a man and face the courts and the city council himself and just maybe address the community he claims to love so much in person as opposed to threatening it via social media. As for his out-of-town supporters, help him find a spot in your town. And regarding the SWAT team, that only happened after his veiled threat on our police chief. Counsel, keep up the great work. The people who actually live here have your back. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is James. James, you are live with counsel.
Thank you.
Good evening, James, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I live in Burbank 21 years. I ran a small business from 2000 to 2013, and unfortunately, we were moved to Hollywood. But I ran a small business in Burbank for 13 years. You know, we live in a city. We live in a state. We live in a county, in a country. We live by the rule of law. And that's why this particular case is now in the courts, folks. And in a court, just as in an election, you can win some and you can lose some. And when you lose, you figure out why. And then you go ahead and perhaps try to change the laws and so on, right? But you don't make up your own set of facts. And when you, this is what I'm seeing right now, is that I'm seeing a radicalized group of people who simply can't accept the fact that they've lost. And so, it is becoming this fervent martyrdom now. It's political theater, but it's also very dangerous because I will say this, that the woman earlier talked about she and her daughter being there this evening, being surrounded by these folks, right? Yeah, same thing, exact same thing happened to me. So, they're actually threatening Burbank citizens, okay? They're threatening people. The police know this, right? I actually think that the city council has shown incredible restraint through all of this. In fact, I would prefer, if you would be much more fervent in getting this thing taken care of. Should have been done six weeks ago, folks, okay? So, the city is trying to work with the owner, but the owner doesn't even want to come to the table. Finally, the federal government had two programs for small businesses, one under the Trump administration and now another one under the Biden administration, to protect payroll. I believe the owner of Tin Horn Flats took advantage of the first one, maybe taking advantage of the second one. Okay? So, there are programs out there. COVID is real. You know, I'm sorry, folks. You're gonna have to live with that for a little while longer.
Thank you for your input for tonight's meeting. The two minutes are over. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Beth Brooks. Beth, you are live with counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm a little nervous here. You know, I actually wanted to ask questions more than make statements because I'm very confused why you're persecuting this particular business who actually defied orders that actually made no sense. Because if he stayed open, what about Target? What about Costco? What about Walmart? What about Home Depot, where I'm sure all of you shopped at? So, that's number one. He was trying to feed his family. He's still trying to feed his family. My personal opinion is that you're using him as an example to tell people, don't defy us, even though the rules, actually, for the past six months at least, are not based in medicine, are not based in science, and are not based in public health. And if they were, the CDC and Fauci wouldn't change his mind every minute. Open the border, close the border. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask. Wear two masks, wear three masks, don't wear a mask. Social distance six feet. Now, show social distance three feet. This really is unbelievable to me. People are calling in saying, well, he didn't, you know, he defied the orders and everybody else didn't. What does that mean? If you told him to wear a chicken on his head, he should wear a chicken on his head because everybody else did? This is really, really something I never thought I would see in this country. You are persecuting him, and if you're persecuting him, you should be persecuting Target in Burbank. You should be persecuting every single place that was open because nobody should have been open then. And people also have free will. They have free will to decide to stay home because they're afraid of viruses and germs and car accidents and falling in the street. They can stay home. But everybody else doesn't have to stay home. We have free will. People have free will to go into the restaurant, to decide to take whatever risks. Life is a risk. People are forgetting this. Life is a risk. The people who decided to go to Target should be the same people who decided to go to that restaurant because the risk is the same. The virus doesn't disappear in Target and suddenly appear in Tin Horn Flats. Stop punishing these people. He's trying to feed his family and his employees' families. Because if you punish him, you'd better be punishing Target. And just because Target is a billion-dollar business and this guy is just a little guy...
Mayor, we've exceeded our two-minute limit.
Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for your input. Your two minutes are over. Thank you very much for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Brandy. Brandy, you are live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I appreciate all that you guys do for the city of Burbank. Um, I've had conversations with a couple of you already about the scenarios at Tin Horn Flats and just wanted to take a moment to speak in a council meeting, which I have honestly never done before in my life. But the situation is so urgent to me as somebody who's lived in this town for my entire life, um, as well as my mother and my grandmother, who moved here with the money that was given to them by the government after my uncle was killed in Vietnam. So our hearts really belong in this town in ways that I don't know that I can properly express in two minutes. But what I want to say is, I feel like you guys have really made and laid an amazing foundation to hold Tin Horn Flats accountable over the past number of months. And my biggest fear is that you won't use all the work that you've done to hold them accountable. And by them, of course, I mean Barrett and his family and his company. I think we all know well enough to know that he is not a suffering business owner, that this is not his first business venture, and that he is a millionaire who will be fine regardless of the choices that you make. And that effectively, the city of Burbank is a pawn for him. And that most of the people who have commented tonight don't even live in this town. They refer to something called Burbank Town Square, which isn't even really a thing. And it's concerning to me that we even have to spend time in a city council meeting or in a closed session talking about things that aren't real. This place has become a QAnon central holding for this town. And it is scary for me to know as a citizen in this community that crimes have been committed beyond public health violations to the point where random citizens have been violently attacked in front of this business. It's horrifying. It's horrifying to me. And I really hope that the people that we've elected, speaking as somebody who has been voting since I could vote, I really hope the people that we have elected will take the opportunity to leverage every thing that you can based on the foundation you've built to hold Barrett and Barfie accountable for their bad behavior during a pandemic and will do everything in your power to keep this community safe.
Mayor, we've exceeded our two-minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you for your call, thank you for your input. Your two minutes are over. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Candace Stevenson. Candace, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. And I just want to say that I have worked and been a member of the Burbank community for more than fifteen years and I wanted to voice my support for the council. Tin Horn Flats has been shut down for health code violations and safety risks. If there had been an outbreak of salmonella or some other contagion that makes people sick, everyone would agree that they needed to be shut down for safety of the people. COVID is a virus that has killed half a million people in America alone. The reason we are having this conversation is because of a politically motivated conspiracy theory around the virus. Restaurants have been given a safe way to open and operate such as takeout orders and more recently through outdoor dining. And Tin Horn Flats has refused to operate in these safe ways. Even as COVID numbers drop, Tin Horn Flats has made it blatantly clear that they are more than okay violating health codes designed to protect people's health if it financially serves their interests. And there shouldn't, and they should be permanently shut down since they have demonstrated an unwillingness to operate safely. Thank you for your time and for your work as council members.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Joanne Ahern. Joanne, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, hi. Um, I'm calling, first of all, in support for Tin Horn Flats. Um, I I just think it's a shame to see this happening to this family. Um, they deserve the right to uh, you know, get back to making an honest living. Um, I believe keeping them closed has created hate and division. I see it. And uh, it would be great to set an example for small businesses that are the backbone of the community and let Tin Horn Flats uh get back to business. And that's it, that's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your call, thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Yalda Sharis. Yalda, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, city council, thanks so much for taking my call. I am a Burbank homeowner and resident, uh, and my children attend school year. And I just wanted to express support for you and everything that you guys are doing to enforce the law. Um, I know that right now there's a lot of people trying to make Tin Horn out to be victims. But the reality is the victims are the residents and the businesses in Burbank who are all trying to follow the law and are trying to comply, but are met with uh all these outsiders coming in from the city, being very disruptive, really offensive graffiti, people setting up stands in front of the business on Magnolia, something that none of the rest of us would be allowed to do, to sell merchandise. Um, it really is time for this to come to an end. And I think if you were to, and I know in fact, having seen the polls, that people in the city overwhelmingly support the action. I'm sympathetic to this young twenty-year-old man who is, really looks like thrown to the wolves by his family. But uh, the reality is that we really don't need a business like this in Burbank, especially given what they're drawing, what they're doing. Constantine in particular, thank you. I'm really sorry to see homophobic slurs that were there on the street against you. And I really hope we can put an end to this soon and just stop this insanity because we really don't need this type of person in Burbank. And thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Xander Taylor. Xander, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you, council members, for having me speak and thank you for opening up discussion for people to come and give their opinion. Um, I don't want to take too much time to talk about this because I think it's um pretty dumb. Um, but uh, to the people out there who support Tin Horn Flats, um, you guys are actually insane. You detest socialism and socialist ideology and then turn around and crowdfund for Tin Horn to stay open. Uh, to the lady that suggested the city prosecute Target for also remaining open during the beginning of quarantine, um, they sell uh essential groceries and Tin Horn is just a crappy dive bar. Um, do what you guys need to do, counsel, to um make sure that Tin Horn Flats is punished. Um, you know, these people are people who were not taught at the age of five that if you don't eat your vegetables, you don't get dessert. Um, they are the kids who scream and whine when they don't get their ways. So do what you need to do. And to all of the council members who aren't being currently paid off by condo development projects, um, you guys gotta do something about keeping small business in Burbank flourishing. Going down Magnolia Park, it's abysmal, it is just a cataclysmic empty desert of of buildings that have poorly signs in the windows. Um, thank you, Constantine Anthony, for having a moral backbone and actually believing in things instead of uh giving the impression that you believe in things so people think that you have um principles that you follow. And uh, I'm sorry, nobody knows the right order to say your name in as well. Um, thank you for having me and thank you for letting me speak. And yes, you can uh, also, oh, also, Lucas Lepageian, you're a clown, bro. You're actually like honk honk, you're a clown. Yeah, that'll, that'll be it, thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Mary Cohen. Mary, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I just want to let you know, uh, your retaliation against um the restaurant in Burbank, Tin Horn and Flats, is unacceptable. We, the people, will bring you down for what you are doing. What you are doing is against Constitution of America. It's retaliation against a hard-working family. And I promise you, you will be coming down of your power. You're abusing citizen of America. And and you will pay for what you are doing to to people. And and it's not acceptable what you do to people. I promise you, we, the people, we will bring you down. We have a communist within our country. Constantine Anthony tweeted that he's gonna bring capitalism down. We have enemy, enemy in our country making decisions and retaliating against our hard-working people. I promise you, American people will bring you down. You feel like King George right now, but you will be in jail and hopefully pay a big punishment for your treason against American people. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for your call, thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Mike Elman. Mike, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, council. Uh, I just called in, it won't take much time, I just want to vo- uh, voice my support uh for what you're doing. Unlike many of the other callers, I'm not a constitutional scholar. Uh, but I do have a degree in history. And what I'm hearing is more like, gives me a better understanding of Shay's Rebellion or the Whiskey Rebellion and Washington had to deal with when this country was formed. A lot of callers seem to be experts on the Constitution but don't know much about US history. Uh, I think this is a situation that comes down very basically to one thing. Tin Horn Flats went looking for trouble and they found it. Uh, there's a saying in uh law enforcement, if you can't do the time, don't do the crime. Uh, so I would just say, continue what you're doing and don't forget all the businesses of Burbank that followed the rules. Uh, we, if there is any fines or any funds that are recovered through the courts, I would like to see some of the funds go to the businesses that followed the rules. Thank you for your time, have a great evening. Good night.
Thank you for your call and input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tracy Academia. Tracy, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, yeah, thank you for taking my call. Um, yes, I'm calling regarding the the closure there of Tin Horn Flats. And uh, I'm one of the concerned citizens there that uh just would like to call to stop the tyranny that's happening to that restaurant and to the owner. Uh, you know, Gavin Newsom already opened up the um, the restaurant. And uh, as we all are aware that he's gonna be recalled with over one, two-point-one million signatures. And uh, this is a matter of time. The city, the city council of Burbank can also be recalled one by one uh if you guys don't stop that tyranny towards uh Tin Horn Flats. Uh, we can start to recall with the, with the very first person, Constantine Anthony. So please, you know, don't make them an example, leave them alone and stop the tyrannical powers that you guys are are overreaching over Tin Horn Flats. That's all, you know, as a concerned citizen, you know, we want all businesses are essential uh regardless of what size of the business. Uh, so that's all I'm asking, is just, is just to stop, drop all the charges towards Tin Horn Flats and the owner, uh, with Lucas. And and just, just leave their, leave their business alone. Turn back his power on, because I know the Burbank City turned off their power, which helped, it kind of disrupts them to keep up the code. Uh, turn their power back on, uh, turn their phone back on and and let him get back to code and and go back to running his business as usual. Um, you know, it's, it's just a shame of what's being happened to that restaurant by the, by the size of what happened with the Citibank, sort of, to Burbank with their overreach of their power.
Mayor, we've exceeded our two-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your input and your comments this evening, your two minutes are over. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Debbie Bind. Debbie, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I'm calling because I'm very concerned that a lot of the calls that are coming into you are coming from out of state, from other locations because there is a um national push on this. They've used social media to bring these people together, to complain about the city. I'm born and raised in this city and the things that Tin Horn Flats got away with is appalling. And I really support you guys and I'm so sorry that you're having to go through all of this. It's so wrong on so many levels. Please uh stand by your decision and don't let them get away with this. It's outrageous. Um, that's all I've got to say. I just wanted you guys to know that, you know, a lot of Burbank citizens have your back. We appreciate what you do, you don't have an easy job. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sam Cohen. Sam, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. Uh, yeah, I just had a quick thing that I want to say about the Tin Horn Flats situation.
Um, please go ahead.
Just go ahead, okay. I wanted to say that uh, these Tin Horn Flats guys, they've encouraged racists and uh bigoted people to come into our city and holding whatever protests on Magnolia, blocking other businesses. Other restaurants played by the rules and made sure that they were following all the guidelines. Did takeout orders, which Barrack Hands or the New Deal, many Burbank restaurants, I supported through this whole crisis. Tin Horn Flats didn't even make an attempt. I don't know how they were allowed to operate for so long, flaunting the rules. I feel like they should have had, if they still have any licenses, I don't understand how they were able to do businesses. There needs to be some consequences for them endangering the community by having a super-spreader event basically in their silly little bar on a nightly basis. Um, yeah, that's basically all I have to say about that. I mean, I know that they are, these MAGA crazies are intimidating and scary. Burbank police, I've been, lived in Burbank all my life and they had no problem pulling me over for skateboarding. I know they're a little bit more scary than I was at fourteen, skateboarding on the street. But something needs to be done about these people because it's disruptive and it's pointless. And they've broken the law and the rules and they've put everyone in danger. And I've seen video of them being violent with people trying to enforce masks outside their business. I just don't understand how it's been allowed to go on for so long. And that's basically all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much for your call and your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Kat. Kat, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'll say quickly because I know council has had to endure a lot of these calls tonight. I'm a homeowner in Magnolia Park, just about a block from Tin Horn Flats. And like many of my neighbors, I have been held hostage to their political theater for months. It's been unbearable and especially in recent weeks, it's been escalating. I don't feel any sympathy for Tin Horn Flats or its owners because at any point they could have chosen to do the right thing. And even now, they could choose to do the right thing and take the legal path to reopening for permits and getting their permits and reopening. But instead, they're outside at the end of my block shouting expletives through bullhorns and filling our neighborhood with hate, viewing their toxic anti-science bigoted messages. They should have no place in Burbank. It's not even about their small business anymore. Tin Horn Flats and the family who runs it have become addicted to fame and notoriety. It is disgusting and my neighborhood is not a theater for their hate. I think what some of these out, these out-of-town supporters don't understand is how little respect and support this business has within their immediate community. My kids are terrified of their hostile moms. We don't even go for walks in that direction around the block anymore. The street's impassable and the entire neighborhood is being tormented almost daily. I implore council to take all legal actions available against Tin Horn Flats to make every effort to deescalate the situation so none of us has to deal with this anymore. And to close, I just want to speak in support of the council members who have been personally attacked. I am so sorry you've been targeted and your Burbank neighbors are behind you all the way. Thank you, council.
Thank you for your call and your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Fred Olson. Fred, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to say uh thank you, I guess, to the council because you guys have been doing, I think, uh, an amazing job. Um, I'm a longtime resident of Burbank, uh, first-time caller here. Uh, but I've been watching this nonsense and ridiculousness. uh, first time caller here, uh, but I've been watching this nonsense and ridiculousness that's been going on with Tin Horn Flats now for this saga for the last six months, seven months, whatever it has been now. And I've been growing more and more concerned uh, with regards to it. So I felt like I needed to call in to show my support not only to the council and to what's been going on here, uh, because it's just been, it's been quite ridiculous, as you guys are well aware. Um, I've been more a little bit concerned about watching these agitators come in from the outside, uh, and the booths that have been now set up to sell merchandise on the street, uh, the trucks that we saw last week parked in the middle lane of Magnolia, um, the city council, uh, I'm sorry, city code enforcement officer that got assaulted last week. Some of these things that aren't, it doesn't seem that are being, um, uh, the Burbank PD has been jumping on. Uh, I can't jaywalk in the city without getting a ticket, but um, but it seems like some of these things have been going on. We've seen the profanity on the, on the building. Um, and I'm hoping that you guys can just start cracking down on this a little bit more because this just, it's, it's, it's like this is just nonsense that continues to go on and on. And it's giving our city a bad name. Um, it's not about politics, it's not about coronavirus, it's not about anything anymore. It's just nonsense. And um, I, I support people's right to protest, but all this other stuff is just, it's just ridiculous. The racism, all of this, it's just nonsense. So, thank you guys.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Beau Nielsen. Beau, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome. Hello? Hello?
Call coming through, mayor.
Beau, you're alive with counsel.
Okay.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thanks very much. Um, thanks for the opportunity for talking my thoughts on this Tin Horn Flats situation. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please, go ahead, sir.
Great, great. So my name is Beau Nielsen. I've been a resident and homeowner in Magnolia Park neighborhood in Burbank for about 14 years. And I'm just calling to thank the council for penalizing Tin Horn Flats to the fullest extent of any laws that they have broken. And I really appreciate that you guys are working so methodically to build an airtight case against, well frankly, these scofflaws. So I hear them using social media a lot to criticize what they refer to as the government or overreaching government for coming after them. But the reality, in my opinion, of this situation is that the government is really just, the city council of Burbank is really just acting on behalf of its citizens. And I've, uh, I've honestly never met a neighbor, a resident in Burbank that isn't appalled by the way that they, uh, Tin Horn Flats dealt with this public health situation. So I support you guys investigating. And if you find new problems, throw the book at them for all I care because it's frankly disgusting how they behave. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Anonymous. Ma'am, you may begin speaking.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Thank, thank you. Uh, did you have a specific question for me before I said what I wanted to say?
No ma'am, we, we don't, we don't go back and forth, but this is your opportunity to have two minutes to address the council, uh, on this issue. We are listening.
Copy that. Um, first of all, I want to say that if, I've been following this for a bit and if, if the restaurant has been in the wrong, I agree with everything that they should be held accountable for that. With that said, this whole thing has brought a lot of anxiety into my life because they've been protesting on my street and I'm really not comfortable like leaving my apartment and stuff when there's these really angry, upset people out and about. Like if, like I've seen pictures of like the, the restaurant boarded up where, where they're using like profanity and stuff and, and, and they're speaking, they're listing specific, um, council member's names. And it's, it's very stressful and, and I don't, it, I, whatever you guys can do to like alleviate them like being in the neighborhoods and on people's like streets where they live, I would really appreciate that because I don't want to be a, around such anger and, 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 and everything over this. But I do think that whatever, if they, if they're in the wrong, of course, I feel like they should be held accountable, but I don't want any of this to come back on people trying to live their life in our, and you know, in, in our neighborhood. That's all I wanted to say. It, it really, really, it really upset me. They've been here twice. And, and I heard, I think I saw on Twitter that they're doing another protest tomorrow and I just don't want them coming up here. If you guys could just do something to keep them out of the neighborhood. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you for your call, ma'am. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tom Jefferson II. Tom, you may begin speaking.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, first of all, Constantine Anthony and the rest of you guys at the Burbank City Council, you claim that Tin Horn Flats is breaking the law? Well, here we, here it is. The business is his property. The government ordering him to close a limited operation, limited operation is theft and a deprivation of rights, which is a felony in the Title 18, Section 242. No governor or health officer has the authority to shut down your business without the due process of law. There is no law prohibiting you from serving your patrons in or outdoors or the number of patrons. Say no to bullies. You guys are just being big bullies and an old mob. You guys are like the mafia. No emergency order supersede your rights protected by the constitution. The alleged laws the restaurant broke has been lifted. Other areas like Ventura have dropped lawsuits and waived the fees and the fines. Why has Constantine Anthony and the rest of you jerks not done the same? Churches in California did sue illegal shutdown laws and won in the Supreme Court. Burbank, you guys, the city council continues wasting your tax dollars on attorney fees, looking, locking out a family-owned small business. This guy, he's a young guy and his family needs this business, okay? And we're not going to stop till every one of you Burbank city council members are revoked and you guys are canceled, okay? We're going to do everything in our power to remove you guys. We don't want you in the office. You violated your oath of office for the last time. This is a warning. We are not stopping until all of you guys are resigned or removed in some fashion. Do you understand what I'm saying? You guys are disgusting human beings. You're picking on this kid for no reason and it's unlawful and we're not going to stand for it. We are not going to stop you guys until you guys are removed from office, okay?
Mayor, we've exceeded our two-minute limit.
Thank you, sir, for your input. Your two minutes are over. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Dean. Dean, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Great, thank you so much for taking my call. Uh, my wife and I are Burbank residents for, um, 18 years. We've owned our home here for the last 12 years. We are a thousand percent, um, in support of the council and against everything that previous caller said. We find, uh, the reason that we fell in love with Burbank is because it's such a diverse, welcoming community and, um, we're really deeply offended by this ostracizing, negative, pejorative movement, which we feel is probably a very, very small, but very loud minority of the, of the actual total population of Burbank. And, you know, driving by Tin Horn Flats and seeing those F, um, President Biden signs and F this and F that, and people yelling at cars and telling people to take their masks off. And these people posing as scientific experts when they just don't know anything and they don't even know how to listen to scientific authorities, uh, with any respect or open-mindedness. So, you know, and I, and we just think it went far too long before anything, any, um, any actions were taken against this guy who was disobeying court orders numerous times. And, um, I hope I was clear because it, it just makes me a little upset, but just so much in favor of you guys. And, and this guy is not Rosa Parks, he's just a disobedient guy who, who just doesn't know how to, he's selectively picking the laws he wants to obey. And all the rest of us have to obey all the laws. And we all want to be inclusive and respectful to our fellow Burbankians. And that's the way the vast majority of us really are. And thank you again.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Mark. Mark, you're live with counsel.
Hi, good evening, welcome.
Great, thank you, Mayor Frutos. Um, hello, city council. Hope you're doing well tonight. I just wanted to let you know that a lot of the Burbank residents, they stand behind you. There's a lot of people calling from different states and we can tell that they're not from here. At the same time, you guys have been taking a beating tonight from the people that don't even live here. A lot of us have our kids watching and it's just appalling the way people are acting. So just to reiterate, I want to let you know that a lot of the, the residents stand behind you. This has been going on for way too long. A lot of the other businesses complied. And believe it or not, I have a lot of friends that go to Tin Horn Flats and we've been discussing this. And they said, you know, they're just making an example out of tin horns. Well, it is true. We are making an example out of them. They never followed the rules while everybody else did follow the rules. So once again, thank you so much for seeing this through. And just do me one favor. If you do let them open, make sure they change their name to Tin Foil Hats. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Carmen. Carmen, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. I've been listening to this meeting. Um, I'm a 45-year Southern California resident and I've heard people, you know, call the protesters racist and violent and all these names. And what I've seen is that these people are protesting for freedom for everyone. Every single person in America right now has been under a little bit of tyrannical rule the last year. And people and small businesses especially have been hit the hardest. And there is no law and no, no mandate that is valid or legal that says that anybody has to close their doors at all. So the fact that people are standing up for their rights to have their business open and their right to make money for their family, that is, that's not something to be frowned upon. I'm listening to people calling in crying, being afraid of these protesters. And these protesters are not the violent, you know, I don't know what you think these protesters are, but I've seen BLM and Antifa beating up people for a year or more. But I have not seen the same thing at Tin Horn Flats. If people want to make money, they deserve to be open. They have every right to stay open. And it's absolutely insane that you would not let businesses open if they want to be open. Are we not adults and we can make decisions for ourselves? Or do we have to have big government get bigger and tell us how to live our lives, where to go and what to do? If I want to walk into a restaurant and have dinner and take my risk of getting a cold or tripping and falling on my face or getting burned on a hot stove if I'm cooking something, that is my right as a human being. There are risks when I leave my house. No matter what, there are risks. And if I can also fly on an airplane with 200 people shoulder to shoulder.
Mayor, we've exceeded our two-minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for your input. Your two minutes are over. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Michelle. Michelle, you're live with counsel.
Uh, good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my call. Um, just my two cents for what it's worth. Uh, I live in Burbank and over the last five, six years or so that I've lived here, I've really come to appreciate the charm of Burbank, which really is all of its small businesses. And I love that about Burbank. I love that it's not just Target, that there are so many amazing small businesses. And if there's been one bright spot in this past year, it's the discovery of so many amazing places that I love giving my support to and my money to and my time to and spreading the word to all my friends and family. However, that being said, um, I do respect the fact that there is a global pandemic going on. And while I put the, the necessity to work and make money, obviously at the forefront, the, the, the lives of the people, I believe in, are a little more important. And it's not about whether dining is open now or not. It's about they, they put themselves in this position and they have to pay the price. I work with four-year-olds and it's like a little kid who, who won't come in for, from recess. They have to pay their price. Um, and I totally respect the freedom to protest and freedom of speech and all these things. But this, it doesn't give you a full license to act and behave with a complete lack, lack of class and conduct, the way these people are. I live walking distance to the bar and, which I used to go to quite frequently, to be honest, and I will never go there again. Being at their rallies, which they in their chat say, "Don't make political," it's clearly become the clubhouse for the, the Trump supporters, which I don't mind if you vote for Trump. I do mind being yelled at with a bullhorn from a woman in a hat, "The Democrats are racist," over and over again, as I just stood very peacefully and quietly, just observing, just listening. And this same woman then made a derogatory statement about Kamala Harris, which is a little ironic. Maybe she should look in the mirror. Another woman in a, quite a lovely, sad.
Mayor, we're at our two-minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call, but your two minutes are over. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Terry. Terry, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, um, I just wanted to say that there's a lot of people calling saying that the supporters of the restaurant don't live from Burbank. I was born here and I still live here and I used to dream about having a family here. But I'm just so disgusted at the nasty and vengeful actions of the city council. I, I mean, this has become a national embarrassment. And it's not because of the restaurant. It's because of how you guys are acting, doing stupid things like sending in the SWAT team. It's embarrassing. COVID is absolutely real and people should take precautions and no one's really saying that it's not real. But you are overstepping your boundaries. Um, and I also wanted to say to Anthony, Constantine, or whatever that nutcase's name is, he was bragging as he was running about wanting to go after small businesses on our Burbank city pages, um, like little Facebook groups. And look what the first thing he's doing is. He's going after a small business. He is just an absolute nutcase. He created a, some Instagram page called Burbank Figgots, where he's going after Burbank residences. He's putting up their pictures, pictures of their children and putting racist comments under them. He's just a professional troll. He's been on the city council just to destroy the city. It's an embarrassment. He's sitting there smug and giggling when anyone calls who disagrees with him. This is a grown man who's living with his mommy and putting his racism on full display, talking about Rosa Parks deserving jail time, blah, blah, blah. He doesn't care about the city and it's incredibly clear that he's here just to put his own agenda here. I just wanted to state that. You guys probably, not probably, I'm sure you have your minds made up already. And I mean, most of you live bored and zoned out, but I just wanted to say my piece because it's absolutely disgusting what you're doing to this beautiful city who is known for having great small business districts like the Magnolia Park area. And you guys are just embarrassing us. Grow some balls and leave them alone. Constantine, you're a dick.
Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Uh, next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sean. Sean, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I, uh, I live in Magnolia Park and I've lived here for over 15 years. And I love the area. I I live in Magnolia Park and I've lived here for over 15 years and I love the area. And what's been going on with Tin Horn Flats has just been a complete, it's been against everything that our neighborhood is for at this time. They have spat in the face of everybody here by their antics and everything else that they've done the last few months. One of the things I keep hearing from people that have called in from probably all across the country and not in Burbank, because I do believe there is a silent majority of the people in Burbank that believe that Tin Horn Flats should be shut down. And we support you, City Council. And one of the things that I have seen in the last, you know, one of the things that we need, that needs to be looked at is that these violations happened in December, not in April, not in March, in December, when we were facing a surge. And they continued to operate the way, operate inside and outside with no masks, with no regard for anything that was going on at the time, not following any of the rules. And I just want to say, I am appalled by what they have done the last few weeks with the profanity, with the giant flags, with selling merchandise around the corner, blocking the walkways so people can't walk. And I just want to say one other thing, we appreciate you, City Council, and you guys keep doing what you're doing. And you guys should not, you guys do not deserve to be attacked for following the rules and and you've you've just done such a good job at really thinking this through. And I'm just really sick and tired of hearing all of the hate and all of the anger geared towards you guys. We support you 100%. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jane Acton. Jane, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to call, I've been a resident of Burbank since 1987, a homeowner. My children both went through all through the Burbank School District. And it's a town that, coming from Colorado Springs, Colorado, I thought it was one of the most beautiful places on, actually in the country to live and the most fair, the most family friendly, family oriented place ever. And I have never seen, I've never seen such an atrocity in the last couple of years taking over Burbank. I don't think any government should be far right or far left, but I got to tell you, with Constantine and what's going on and Adam Schiff and all of the subterfuge, we know it's backed by George Soros, this town is unrecognizable. It's become so far left and what they've done at Tin Horn Flats is absolute atrocity. I've seen it done to other people I know that own small businesses in Burbank, on Magnolia particularly, making everybody also become homeless like Constantine was at one time. It's not the way to run a city. And I'm ashamed to say now I live in Burbank, everyone in the country, around the world, all my friends in England and Australia and India say, my God, what kind of nightmare is that place called Burbank? I'm really ashamed. I hope that you will turn it around. Don't persecute family owned businesses because if he hadn't kept this open the second time, I know all the help, they would have been out on the street too. And that's no glory to add to the 70,000 homeless. We need to support our people in Burbank, our family businesses. Costco didn't close down, none of the stores did. And I was told by the manager of Costco, I said, why are they acting this way? He said, we're taking our marching orders from our mayor, who's taking it from Garcetti, who's taking it from Newsom. That's all I have to say. You fix the city, because I'll tell you something, you're going to have some real ugly things happening by the way the city is turning. It's turning into some fascist communist society. That's not Burbank. Burbank was a real small town in America.
Mayor, we've met our two minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for your input. Your two minutes are over. Members of the public, council members and Ms. Jimenez, we're up to 100 callers so far, if my number is correct. And we've been listening to public input now for three hours. I have to still move the meeting forward, so I'd like to reduce the time now to one minute and still hopefully allow more callers to weigh in. And please have whoever is picking up the phone, let them know that they have one minute. But for the good of the cause, third hour, 100 callers, we still have a lot of business in front of us. Please let them know. Thank you very much.
Will do.
Thank you council members for understanding.
Our next caller is Philip Rodriguez. Philip, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Bye. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I live with my husband in Vicroy Park off of Victory. And I, so I just want to let you know, like, my 1506, I'm like a real resident and everything. And I just want to let you know, I I'm really against what you guys have done in regards to Tin Horn Flats. I really don't like, there was a different way to to handle this, I think, and keep it within the court system. But when you guys like bring like a paramilitary police, like in a riot SWAT type of scenario where they're riding on trucks and everything like that, it just like, that ratchets up like the the tension from everyone. And I would thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, that you understand like that what de-escalation is and, you know, you're actually like making things worse. So I would really appreciate it if you guys could like let the diplomacy and civility like continue and not have like the police like.
Mayor, we are at our one minute limit.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Again, to the members of the public, it is one minute. Thank you for understanding, because I want to listen to everybody that's been waiting to talk to the council before we continue the meeting forward for the council's discussion. Thank you, council members and community members for understanding. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Louise Solomon. Louise, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Gentlemen, I am just deeply dismayed at the tyranny that that being supported in Burbank by City Council regarding this communism regarding Tin Horn Flats. This you, this started with unconstitutional mandates and shutdowns to begin with, these are not laws. And therefore, the restaurant was forced to work on portable power. And I have, I am not interested in any yellow tags or red tags, I'm interested in Tin Horn Flats being opened up. And I will assure you, if this this fence or whatever you're doing is put up, there are going to be thousands and thousands of affidavits coming your way that will get to the sheriff and as well as recalls. So Mr. Constantine, at Al, you are on notice.
Mayor, we are at our one minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please. Thank you.
Our next caller is Tom Leibitz. Tom, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi there. Hi there. I'm wondering how we can get rid of Constantine Anthony. He's clearly a Marxist and he has way too much middle class hate for America. And this is the problem that we're having in Los Angeles County with a lot of these elected officials. There's way too much systemic Marxism in Los Angeles County and in the city. He's got so much hate for middle class America and for small businesses. This isn't good for Burbank, it's not good for America. We need to end systemic Marxism. What they're doing with the Tin Horn Flats, attacking middle class, attacking small business, all right, this isn't good, this is Marxism. This is clear Marxism. And it's illegal and it's unconstitutional.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Nolan Sutherland. Nolan, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I live on Chandler by the bike path with my wife and kids. My brother and his wife also live in Burbank. And all of us firmly support the permanent closure of Tin Horn Flats. The City Council, the Police Department, the Fire Department have been more patient and more slow to act than the situation even warrants. Obviously, they've denied science and ignored the pandemic, but they've also ignored lawful court orders. They have created fire hazards by insisting on opening. I want to trust my local businesses that they follow regulations and laws and they can't just decide whether they want to disregard. And I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Ryan Rittmiller. Ryan, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Tonight, I want to ask, why are we only going after Tin Horn when there is multiple businesses in Burbank that have done the same thing? And why haven't we gone after them? And because it's the only one that's been publicized in Instagram and Facebook and all that?
Sir, we're not allowed to answer questions. This is your opportunity to weigh into the council.
Well, and that's why you guys are paused, because you know it's incorrect for what you guys are doing. We need to look at it in a different view and put our money elsewhere. And I'm not on either side, left or right, nor nothing. I'm just saying you need to look at the whole picture, not this singular one.
Mayor, for the record, we have met our one minute limit.
Okay, thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Shelby Kemper. Shelby, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for listening, guys. I just wanted to call in quick and say that I'm a fifth generation LA native and I love Tin Horn Flats. And I know it's been such an unprecedented time for everybody, but I was taught that a wise man considers the cost. And I just feel like the strife and the pushing and the pulling, I think, might have a worse outcome than we all really wanted it to be. So I'm really hoping that as you guys navigate this together as a city and just as a people, we can find some peace and move forward, you know? And that's really all I had to say.
Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Michelle Ruth. Michelle, you're live with counsel.
Hi.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to say a few things. Number one, I support Tin Horn Flats. I've been a resident here for 25 years. You know, in December, when they, you know, when they banned outdoor dining again, they even said they had no evidence. And the evidence was in confined spaces and indoors. So I don't understand why you're going after them. I feel like it's political retaliation because they vote a different way than you guys want and that they were outspoken. There's a lot of people in Burbank here that actually defied it behind the scenes and you guys did nothing. You also did nothing when there was Black Lives Matter protests that defied, you know, what they they, what the Health Department wanted this summer. You had nothing to say about that. And I have a, you know, so I, that's an issue for me too. So it just sounds like you're wasting our taxpayers' dollars on this and it's just retaliation. And the other thing that I have a big problem with is Constantine Anthony and Nick Schultz.
Mayor, we have met our one minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you for your input. Your time is up. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Kelly DeSault. Kelly, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I'm just calling because I'm really upset with what you're doing with small businesses. When you're letting people come in across the border without being tested for COVID and you're closing and destroying small businesses, I don't understand what the point of this is and why exactly it is that you're doing this. Why? What what is, what is, what is the purpose of this? Are you trying to make a point? Or are you trying to just, I'm a, I'm a small business owner and my business has been destroyed from all of this. And I don't understand what our government, who by the way, does work for us, the people, is doing in this case. And I just, I had to call in and say something because I think what you're doing is wrong. I hope you all can live with yourselves at the end of the day because this is not okay. That's all I have, that is all I have to say. I hope that this does not fall on deaf ears, but calling in SWAT teams and destroying people's lives while we let people that we don't even know what they're bringing into this country.
Mayor, we have met our one minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Your time is up. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Richard Schroder. Richard, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, counsel. This is Ricky Schroder. I don't want, I only have a minute, I don't want to take much of your time. I'm calling on behalf of that boy Lucas, who I met over at Tin Horn Flats. And I'd like to just speak on his behalf that, you know, I know he opened up when, when you didn't want him to, but he was just trying to make a living, trying to pay his bills. And so I think to go after him now for, for, for that, you know, maybe you guys can cut him some grace, cut him some slack and try to find a solution so that they don't lose their family business and that he doesn't have to get arrested anymore. So I would just implore you guys to try to find some common ground because there's a lot of people who are concerned about him. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Mitch Scott. Mitch, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hello. I would like to say this is not about Tin Horn Flats, this is about governmental overreach and the abuse of power. It's obvious this is not about health or safety or following the science. At this point, it's about revenge and making an example out of the business who dared to stand up to you guys and your orders that are not actually laws. Other businesses are now open, but you insist on keeping Tin Horn Flats closed. The city is not going to compensate any business for lost earnings if they do comply with the orders, so what is the incentive to listen to them? What if a business shuts down and loses the ability to provide for their family? What does the city do to make that better? What about the people employed by these businesses who no longer have jobs because you ordered them to shut down? What about their families and the people they provide for? The city loves to appear so virtuous and loving by claiming they are doing it for the benefit of the people, but they're doing out, doing it out of a place of ego and wanting to win and to intimidate. They lose their jobs and the ability to make a living while you get to keep your jobs.
Mayor, we have met our limit.
It must be nice to have.
Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call, but your time is up. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Skylar Hart. Skylar, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. Do I, do I have a minute to speak?
Yes, you have a minute, sir. Go right ahead.
Great. Yeah, I'm just calling to support Tin Horn Flats. What you guys are doing to them, I think, is completely wrong, constitutional, I can go on and on. I mean, if there was any, you know, data, any proof that, you know, they caused any sort of COVID outbreak, they were responsible for any deaths or anything like that, I can completely understand what you guys are trying to do. But, you know, to the extent of my knowledge, you know, they have done nothing wrong, you know, they have not, you know, caused any deaths, they have not, you know, caused any illnesses, anything to do with the COVID pandemic. And are going under, you know, all of us are losing work, all of us are losing jobs, we're losing money, we're struggling. And in a time like this, instead of putting businesses out and under, I think you guys should be helping them. And to arrest that kid, I don't, I don't know how old he was, 19 or 20 years old.
Mayor, we have met our one minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Your one minute's up. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Brett Cooper. Brett, you're alive with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, uh, so for context, I grew up in Burbank. I'm still a resident. Um, government is in place to serve its constituents, its constituents. And the tyrannical runaround that you guys are giving to Tin Horn Flats is absolutely ridiculous, and it is not serving the community whatsoever. You're spending our precious tax dollars and your time on something that is no longer even relevant, considering that all restaurants are now open. So this is clearly being done out of spite or some desperate need to make a point. You're spending our money padlocking doors, having these hearings, and arresting a brave young man who is just trying to run his business. The Latigians are a wonderful, wonderful family who embody the American dream and have been loyal Burbank residents for decades. The manner in which you are treating them is despicable, and it makes me honestly ashamed to live here, and I'm excited to move once I vote most of you out. All of your, all that you are doing is actively demonstrating that you really don't care about serving the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Flash Petroa. Flash, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Uh, yeah, hi. I just want to speak, I want, I, as politely as possible, I want to say that this position of city council is an elected position that is supposed to be fair for all citizens, not just the, uh, fake woke mainstream media-watching sheep. And, and I, and I gotta say, this continuous harassment of these fine owners here at the, at, at, at Tin Flats, or, uh, 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 I mean, uh, Tin Horn Flats, is, uh, it, it smacks actually of, uh, of, of a vendetta. It's like, you haven't listened to us, so we're going to punish you. And, and the moment that the other restaurants should have been opening up, the issue should have been resolved. They should be open with apologies. At this point, we know from the facts that a lot of what's happened in this pandemic, these numbers have been exaggerated greatly. We know that it's not happening in restaurants.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Thank you. Sir, thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Carrie Jones. Carrie, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Um, my issue is that, uh, this whole thing with Tin Horn Flats seems to be nothing but retribution. And it's on a scale that I couldn't even imagine, where you're drilling holes in the sidewalks to put up a fence around this property that belongs to a person, that belongs to a business, that belongs to a family, that is the oldest bar in your own city. And you want to keep him from his own property, from running his own business. Constantine Anthony, I don't understand how you're on city council at this point. When you're running on a platform of saving small businesses, being for small businesses, being for mom-and-pop businesses, how do you get away with saying things like that and then going after this, this mom-and-pop bar, the oldest one in your city, for nothing but getting back at them for not going with an unconstitutional measure that said they had to shut down?
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Max Gregory. Max, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much, uh, for your time. Um, you guys are not responding to these, this is not like a conversation, right? I just get a minute to speak?
Correct. You get a minute of input.
All right. I just want to say that what's happening at Tin Horn, at, uh, Tin Horn Flats is, uh, morally very disturbing. I understand that, uh, there are people that feel that now they're breaking the law. But they're only criminals because certain people in the city decided to make them criminals and have exacerbated this problem. Uh, as leaders of Burbank, you guys are supposed to be the level-headed, mature people that, uh, city's population elected. It's up to you to de-escalate the situation as opposed to escalating the situation, which is clearly what's happening. It's going to get out of control. It's, it's a mess.
One-minute limit.
Ms. Jimenez, how many callers do we have online right now?
Give me one second. Let me just double-check on that. We have nine callers in the queue.
Okay, Ms. Jimenez, for the good of the order, I will make a tough decision. After these nine callers, this is it. Oh, I'm sorry. Please, please allow, for the next two minutes, any callers that call in to remain in the queue. After two minutes, do not take any more new calls.
Okay.
We have to keep, we have to get to the business.
Okay. It is 8:45 PM.
Please let them know. Uh, next caller, please.
Coming through.
Our next caller is Michael. Michael, you're live with counsel.
Okay, um, hi, uh, I just real quickly, I know I got a minute, so, um, i- in my opinion, it's, and I think it's with a lot of others, it's a real shame what City of Burbank has done to Tin Horn Flats. I was born and raised in Burbank. It's a beautiful, um, American city. To even be able to call in and talk to you guys tonight requires freedom to do that. And you guys are trying to take that away from a family operating and engaging in commerce, which they have the right to do like everybody else. And I think it's really sad, and I'm wondering if you guys are weighing out the psychological effects that this is going to have on surrounding cities or so, or other people, or even people within the city, when they look at the commodity, which is Burbank, and how you guys are basically setting a precedent showing that you come down on American businesses and you come down on American families and you come down on people's ability to have the freedom to engage in commerce? Is that being weighed out at all?
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jeff Wright. Jeff, you're live with counsel.
Hey, hello, city council. Mr. Mayor, how are you all? Uh, first of all, I want to apologize for all the invective that you've all had to endure tonight, especially Councilman Anthony. Um, I know it's been quite an evening. I'm, I'm a Burbank resident and business owner. Um, and I, unfortunately, I don't have a, a list of Facebook group talking points to refer to, like a lot of other callers seem to. But I just want to say I support what you're doing. Um, I think that people have forgotten that Tin Horn Flats has willfully and repeatedly continued to break the law, to violate court orders issued by the County of Los Angeles and state superior courts, uh, and has continued to be bad-faith actors in the City of Burbank, to not be responsible citizens, to be wildly irresponsible business owners, and to attempt to galvanize people that don't live in Burbank and some people who do live in Burbank into the type of action that they have, uh, they have exhibited over the last several weeks is absolutely appalling to me. Uh, I'm sorry that you've had to endure this. I'm sorry that the people that live immediately around Tin Horn Flats have had to endure it. And I hope that the city council keeps pursuing the course of action that they are. They keep enforcing the court orders. Uh, and they, they keep the pressure on because you shouldn't give up. You shouldn't, uh, cower in the face of this clown show.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your comments and calling in. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Sheila Gordon. Sheila, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'm, you know, very upset at what I'm seeing because we were supposed to be, city council is supposed to be backing the people of the city. And here, Tin Horn Flats just wants to stay in business like all of us that are business owners. And what I've seen with the business is being decimated. You know, the, the solutions should never be worse than the problem. And I've had many of my friends lose their businesses, homes, and move out of state. And we cannot do that. The city councilmen, we have to back we, the people, because otherwise that's called communism, where we've got a government that doesn't work for the people. And it's, we have to have a government and city councilmen working for the people. And I've actually, um, gone on Constantine's Twitter, and he's blocked me, and I'm a constituent, and that, I don't feel that's fair because in our First Amendment rights, we are supposed to, you know, tell the government our grievances. That's our First Amendment right. And to be blocked by this man is, is really disgusting, actually, because he represents us.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Robert Cantrell. Robert, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Robert Cantrell. I represent the homeless community, so please forgive me for, uh, being brusque. Uh, I'm usually pretty upset that people don't pay attention to us anyways. Uh, I would like to speak about, um, what is, uh, happening in this situation. Um, now, I don't really agree with the term fascism. I think it's outdated and obsolete, but I do know what tyranny is. Um, and I gotta say, I know how it would feel if somebody cut off the electricity to my tent in the middle of the forest because I didn't wear a mask. Now, I understand there's a pandemic going on. I understand there's health concerns. I understand people need to protect themselves. Personally, I think they should just stay home. However, when the government uses businesses to control the people, that's fascism under Mussolini's term, I would just call it.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Armon. Armon, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you so much. Um, Mayor, as everyone knows, COVID, COVID's been tough on everyone, both by health and financially. Um, I believe just because Tin Horn Flats opened up, they should not have been harassed to this extent. There's a lot of street vendors who don't even have licenses or permits. We're a community. We're human beings. At this point, can we please find some common ground? I mean, no council member has lost their wages. So as far as Constantine, he's from, just from this conference, from first time seeing his video, every time his name came up, he's had this disgusting smirk on his face. I don't think he's mature to be on council. Somebody who's fought, who's been homeless, if he put eh, just as much effort, he could fight homelessness in Burbank. And Ms. Sharon Springer, she's been on her phone looking down most of the time. She doesn't even care about the meeting. So thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you for your attention. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Stephen Peters. Stephen, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I am so sick and tired of hearing all these people complain about the treatment, quote-unquote, that they're getting, that Tin Horn Flats is getting from city council. How many hundreds of businesses are there in Burbank? Why is it that we're still talking about this one business? Is it because city councils personally have some vendetta against them? No, we all know it's not. That's complete BS. Tin Horn Flats has been given chance after chance after chance to fix their problems and come back legally and in the right, and they've refused to do so and flipping the bird to the city council all the while. Listen up, all you Tin Horn supporters. We all see you, and you all look really silly. They are not victims. They are poor business owners who are not good at their job. And honestly, I cannot wait for them to be gone and get some good, healthy business that Burbank deserves in the place where they are now. See you later, guys.
Thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next call, please.
Our next caller is Zavi. Zavi, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I, I won't be long. I got a minute. I just want to ask a couple of questions regarding the, uh, closing. I wanted to figure out what, what the reason was, um, number one. Uh, number two, uh, who actually makes the decision to, to do that regarding putting the holes in to put a fence up? And I'm sure you guys have a lot of litigation coming your way. Uh, some other question would be, whose money are you going to use, um, to fight some of these lawsuits? I know quite a few are in a pipeline right now. And I guess my last one is, I know I got, only got a couple of seconds, is how many votes, um, does it take to replace council city members? Um, I, just in general, uh, for, for Burbank. So I know that you guys, well, I agree on platform to go and ask those questions, but those are the four questions that, that I had, you know, in a, a group that I'm, I'm a part of as well, and we're all wondering what's going on right now. We're just trying to understand the process. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Reno Thorson. Reno, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for taking the call and for having this late meeting. I know you guys are really busy, and this isn't probably the only thing you do during the day. Uh, 100% in support of you guys getting rid of Tin Horn Flats, please. I know your hands are, uh, they're not tied, but you have to move slow because the courts, the place is becoming a hazard. Uh, I don't know how much longer it's going to be before we get people with rifles standing in these, uh, protest areas that, uh, we're seeing with the QAnon flags and everything else up. Uh, and kudos to you guys for sitting there taking all of this vitriol. And rest assured that, uh, the clear-thinking people of Burbank, the actual we, the people, will have your backs in a recall. Even you, uh, uh, Anthony, Constantine, excuse me, even you, Constantine. That's all I have. Thank you so much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Jonathan Hastings. Jonathan, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
No, thank you. I appreciate the, uh, the time here. I know we have a minute, but, uh, I just wanted to kind of weigh in here on, uh, understanding that we realize this has been taxing on, uh, not only the business owner, but also, uh, the elected officials and yourselves. And I think that, uh, number one, we really can't let politics get in the way of a family making income or even a municipal government making a decision. And I feel like it's, uh, we're at a disadvantage here at the City of Burbank. And I'm siding with, uh, both the business and the city. And I think that, uh, really, if we just levy the fines and work with the county and figure out what that total is and make the business pay for that, I think, uh, just moving on and letting the business, uh, you know, interact, uh, in the City of Burbank, that would be best. Uh, I think that, uh, this is taking away from real city matters. And, uh, I guess if I can wrap it up, I would say that, um, a little worried about when this becomes a federal case, if it should be, uh, what the liability of the city would be based on, um, kind of the actions we've taken thus far, uh, because the federal government will most likely side.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Teresa Ginnell. Teresa, you're live with counsel.
Good evening, welcome.
My name is Teresa, and I'm
My name is Teresa and I am a Burbank resident for over 30 years. I just want to back the Burbank City Council. And I am a patriot in this country. And I think that my rights to be free of COVID are just as important as other people's rights. And I think that people that do not follow laws and do not follow health guidelines are breaking the law and they are breaking the code of the country. And I do not believe that Tin Horn Flats should be able to do this. I have followed the rules for a year. I have done everything to keep myself safe. They are not doing that and they are endangering our city and they are endangering our country.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Ma'am, thank you for your call. Thank you for your input. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Alexis Lopez. Alexis, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
I'll make, hi, guys. I'll make this quick. Uh, when, when you guys were closing, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Okay, when you guys were closing the outdoor seating for restaurants, you were fine by letting the, the restaurants and, to let the movie industry and the Burbank film industry to keep eating outside with hundreds and hundreds of people sitting on tents. And one thing I want to ask, men to our country to have such a schmuck laughing at your, at the people that you represent. You schmuck. The people that are calling are your constituents and you're smirking at them. Are you, are you for real, dude? Like seriously, and you're talking to people while people are speaking to you, you keep speaking to somebody that's behind the laptop. Don't be a schmuck, man, because you're representing us and you're laughing at us while we're speaking to you. Can you be so fucking stupid?
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for, thank you for your call and your input. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Rick Bobby. Rick, you're live with council.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, um, so how much money are you guys going to cost the Burbank citizens when you guys lose in courts? I just want to know because, yeah, Tin Horn Flats is going to play the long game. We're going to support them. You guys are going to cost the City of Burbank probably millions of dollars. So you guys really want that on your hands? I mean, we could be solving so many problems with homelessness, Mr. Constantine, you who have been homeless. So, I mean, it doesn't take much to get people treatment for drugs. You're probably on drugs right now, but, I mean, come on, dudes. Let's not cost city taxpayers settlement money that we used to fight homelessness and let's, you know, open up Tin Horn Flats so they can contribute paying taxes because this is ridiculous, guys. If you guys really think that there's a scam, a plandemic, a scandemic, I mean, just go to cdc.gov/flu/weekly. Again, that's cdc.gov/flu.
Mayor, we have met our one-minute limit.
Sir, thank you for your input. Thank you for your call. Next caller, please.
All right, Mayor, so I've been alerted that that is our final caller of the evening per your direction.
Thank you. I want to thank members of the public that waited all this time, all the way till the end to give us your input. I now declare the public comment period closed. We will now proceed to an online closed session meeting. Council will reconvene for a regular council meeting through an online meeting process on Tuesday, April the 13th. The televised portion of the closed session meeting is now over.